Good afternoon. Plaid from the Florida County Commissioners Afternoon Session.
Sure, my line.
We will begin with P sixty-three this afternoon. This afternoon. Oh, yeah. Thank you. P sixty.
Proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, September 3rd, 2025.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Victoria Ospeitos, Planning Development Economic Growth Department. Item P sixty-three is PDE twenty-six zero 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 two. This is an ordinance amending the Land Development Code for Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities. This is being requested for a continuance to the November 12th, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting in Dade City at 1:30 PM.
Move to continue time certain?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Next.
P sixty-four?
Yep.
Tampa Bay Times, August 2025 for P sixty-four.
Go ahead, Terry.
It's not loading. Here we go. Item P sixty-four is PDE twenty-six zero 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 three. This is an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Land Development Code for Tree Preservation and Replacement Standards. This is being requested for a continuance to the January 6th, 2026 Board of County Commissioners meeting in Dade City at 1:30 PM.
Move to continue time certain?
Okay, so we did have someone to sign up for P sixty-four. It has been advertised as a continuance, but we do have someone here who wants to speak to it. How do you want? How should we handle that one?
And not speak when it comes to you?
What do you say?
It's legislative. If the board wants to hear comment, they may. It's not, you're not in the same sort of rules that you are with quasi judicial, but the board's general rule has been that if it's advertised as a continuance, they don't take public comment.
Right.
All right, so we're having, this is going to be moved to January?
Six.
January 6th. So, the folks who signed up, sorry, but we will continue this to January so you can come back, come back then.
Terry, does this, has this been to Planning Commission or is there still hearing?
Going back.
It has gone to Planning Commission. There have been workshops on it. Most recent, I believe, was back in August, but it is preparing to return come November.
Okay.
So if you want to also go to the Planning Commission in November, you'll have an opportunity to speak there as well. Okay, so it has been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. P sixty-five.
Publication Tampa Bay Times, September 3rd, 2025, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P sixty-five is PDE twenty-six zero zero two seven. This is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map from ROR to IL on Stone Road just east of US 19. This is a request for a continuance to the December 9th, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting in Newport Ritchie at 1:30 PM.
Move to continue time certain?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just want to direct, Terry, I would like to meet with you and the team on this one here.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
And I want to make one comment on the tree, the tree ordinance for the people that are here. I was kind of disappointed that it didn't go ahead and, part of our tree, future tree plants didn't make it out of Planning Commission, as I said in our meeting yesterday. You know, they chose to table some and bring it all together. I say Godspeed on fixing our issues with trees, and so please, I don't want to see it paused again at the Planning Commission. It has to, has to come to us. No more delays on that one.
Understood.
P sixty-six.
Proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, September 17th, 2025. P sixty-six.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Denise Hernandez with the Code Compliance Department. Item P sixty-six, just to let you know, this is a glitch amendment. Today, we are not, I'm not asking for a, for any action from the board, just to please take public comment. And this is the Land Development Code Amendment eighty. It is an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Section 530.5 Parking or Storing of Recreational Vehicles, Section 530.16 Parking and Storage of Commercial Vehicles and Commercial Equipment in Certain Residential Areas Prohibited, and other sections as necessary for internal consistency, providing for applicability repealer, providing for severability inclusion into Land Development Code and an effective date. Again, this is Land Development Code Amendment eighty. These were presented to the Horizontal Roundtable Interested Parties Meeting on September 17th, 2025. They did provide comment, and we made changes based on the comments that were provided. On October 2nd, 2025, the local planning agency found the proposed amendments consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan. And going through these amendments fairly quickly, because these are just glitches, and these are items that came about as a result of a code compliance case. The first change is in Chapter 500 Zoning, Section 530, 530.5 Parking and Storing of Recreational Vehicles. We just wanted to make it absolutely abundantly clear that parking and storing of recreational vehicles is, are not allowed over the right-of-way in any zoning district. Previously, it just called out that there were certain zoning districts where it was prohibited in. That was clearly a glitch. It should be that it's not allowed in any right-of-way of any zoning district within Pasco County. The following portion is 530.6 Parking and Storage of Recreational Vehicles and Parking and Storage of Commercial Vehicles, sorry, and Commercial Equipment in Residential Areas. That was also a glitch. We wanted to make sure that MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development District was in there. PUD, Plan Unit Development District was in there, but not MPUD. That should have always been in there. Also include the county-owned right-of-way. And then this is one of the concerns that the Horizontal Roundtable had, that it might prohibit the usage of, stating that someone is not in compliance if they're parking a commercial vehicle in a commercially zoned portion of an MPUD. And we wanted to make it clear that that's not a violation, that that's okay. So those are the changes that we're making again today. We're not asking for any action from you. Just please accept public comment, and this is set for adoption on November 12th, 2025 at 1:30 PM in Dade City. And I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Well, this is another Godspeed on this, because we're fixing some big problems that are happening. If you, if you ever drive on rangeland in Starkey Ranch, people are parking their commercial trucks and boats and all their work vehicles on our roads. They've got campers. They're using our parking spaces instead of putting them in storage places, so.
Yeah, and as Commissioner Starkey stated, and I do want to mention, I do want to thank both Sam Bounde and Elizabeth Blair for their assistance with this. Been very, they've been very helpful.
Have anybody here to speak?
Huh? No one signed up. No one signed up. And there's no action on here.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, we'll take public comment. Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Okay. So if someone, let's say they work for Stanley Steamer, and that's their work vehicle, are they allowed to park it in their driveway?
No. No, that's parking a commercial vehicle in a residential district.
Gotcha.
I think it, I think it depends on what it, what it.
They can park it while they're doing business, so like, for example, let's say they're cleaning the carpet or doing some type of cleaning in that location, they can park it while they're doing that, but not park it overnight.
So some people that are just struggling getting on their feet, and they, they work for a company, they'll give them a company truck to use just as transportation to get to and from work and stuff like that. So in that instance, they're not servicing their home, but they're using that as transportation to get to work.
They could park it inside the garage, somewhere where it's not visible. But the, just to clarify, the code is not changing that. It's always been that way, so it's not, we're not modifying it to make it that way.
So they can't park their work vehicle in the driveway?
Never have been able to, that's correct.
In like both, the whole state? What was I just going to say? We have people parking semi-trucks. Mrs. Carball and I were driving around, they're parking semi-trucks in our parking spaces, so. In front of our Blueberry Farm that's, you know, being developed, we have three, right now, we have three storage trailers that, the kind you hook behind your truck to move or, you know, but, and they say advertise here, and they've been there for months, sitting in our parking spaces. I say they're abandoned and we should tow them, but. Okay, so is there anyone else here who would like to speak to this ordinance today? All right. Thank you very much. Okay, P sixty-seven.
So just, just for the record, this is the, this is the, this is your first public hearing. The second public hearing will be held on November 12th, 2025 at 1:30 in Dade City.
P sixty-seven.
Proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, September 3rd.
Oh, I'm sorry, one second. Did you get my video? Can I show you something real quick? Sorry, one second. Denise? I want, I want you to look at this video. And this is, this is a house in my district, and they're metal scrapers. I've shown you videos of this house before. I have, I have a problem with this kind of, what this does to a neighborhood. These trucks never move. They store their, their metal there. You know this house. But how is that, is that, Commissioners, we, you know, we, we don't have any rules here against multiple vehicles in the yard, but I don't think this is good for our community to have, have people. I don't know who would want to live next door to this.
Commissioner Starkey, send me the information, we'll look into it. I mean, these, there's a couple of violations I already see there, just by looking at the site.
But these trucks are always there.
Are they registered?
Can you park in? I have no idea.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that. We'll look into that.
But legally, we can't even go behind there, right? And see if they have?
There is a concept in Chapter 162 Florida statutes regarding curtilage, and we'll, we can take a look at that.
Okay. Well, I feel so bad for this neighborhood. Okay, thank you. Okay, next. Yeah.
P sixty-seven. Proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, September 3rd, 2025.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Amanda Hill, Planning Development Economic Growth. Item P sixty-seven is an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, creating Section 530.25 Backyard Chickens and other sections as necessary for internal consistency, providing for applicability repealer, providing for severability, inclusion into the Land Development Code, and an effective date. The intent of this ordinance is to allow for backyard chickens within residential properties for the purpose of egg production. This ordinance does not seek to add any provisions or restrictions for the keeping of chickens on estate residential or agricultural zoning districts. Standards related to the keeping of chickens will be detailed in Chapter 14 of the Pasco County Code of Ordinances. This will be brought to the Board for consideration at the November 12th public hearing in Dade City. The proposed provisions in Section 530.25 are quite short and include the prohibition of the keeping of chickens in multifamily zoning districts. Additionally, the setback shall be the required setbacks of the nearest zoning district where minimum lot area with depth and setback regulations can be met. For non-conforming use for a dwelling unit on a commercially zoned parcel, the parcel shall be considered a residential district. And finally, the provisions of the proposed section will not supersede any covenant or restriction of record. This is the first public hearing of the proposed Land Development Code amendments. The adoption hearing of the proposed Land Development Code amendments will be on November 12th, 2025 at 1:30 PM in Dade City. So on November 12th, you would have two items before you, both the adoption hearing for the Land Development Code amendment, and then the Chapter 14 Code of Ordinances amendment. And I did include here a comparison of some of, I'm sorry, can you go? Thanks. There you go. A comparison of some of the research that we did in preparing the standards, especially for Chapter 14. So for the communities that we looked at in general, they allowed between four to six chickens, hens only. Most of them, they don't require permits. I believe there were two, Hernando and City of Braneton, that required permits in some capacity. They all restrict the chickens to residential zoning districts, and the square footage allowed for the bird's range, some is little as two square feet, some four feet, and in terms of the overall size of the coop, that also ranges as well. And I have the language here for Chapter 500, 530.25, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Yes.
Did, did we amend, when we reviewed this middle last time, did we amend some of these rules that makes it rather cumbersome to get to have chickens? I mean, there, if it's the.
They have to take a class.
I disagree with.
That's, I mean, that's in their rules.
Everything, well, I won't support it as is then, but, I mean, we make it, we're going to make this so cumbersome for folks to have backyard chickens, so bureaucratic, permit and everything else. It's like, if people want chickens and they have the appropriate zone, let them have the chickens. I mean, you, you don't have to do all that to go adopt an animal from the animal shelter, and this is to feed your family. So I just, I appreciate the work, I just disagree with how bureaucratic this ordinance is.
Commissioner, I kind of agree, and I just doesn't even really have a class. So what if we?
They're going to have to pay.
But I think they should have some knowledge. What if we just make them, what if they have to sign on to an informational page?
Can I add some clarity to?
This solves a lot of the issues we've had.
Oh, yeah.
With chickens.
Yeah. Well, you know, I want.
Could have them, some people couldn't, and they're, they're out in a rural area, and they should be allowed to have them. For them to get a permit to have them, it makes sure they're responsible owners of those chickens. They can't have roosters, there's other things, geese, quail, any game animals they can't have. But this corrects a lot of that that we've had.
You know, I've been trying.
And allows some people to have them that couldn't have them before.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we don't require permits for other animals in this county too? Cats, dogs, whatever? I mean.
So a previous version, a previous draft of this did require a permit. We did look into that, Commissioner Waitman, and like I mentioned, the chart that I had previously.
Yeah, go back to that one.
Most of those communities, they did not require a permit, and between looking at that research in terms of the feasibility of implementing that permit, getting it off the ground, as well as the cost, and then even in terms of how many people are coming in for permits, the ordinance drafting team decided to remove that requirement for a permit in the draft that's going to be coming forward to you for consideration in November.
And another point to this.
Okay.
Code enforcement's already stretched too thin. You really don't want them to be policing chicken coops too? I mean.
Well, they're having to now, that's the point.
I mean, either, I think we need to simplify this, that's all.
Okay, so you're, you're simplifying it for the next reading?
Yes.
That's what I heard.
Yes.
I'm okay with that. You guys over there?
Yeah, I'm for no permit as well.
Okay, is anyone here who wants to speak to the chicken?
Talia Burckfeld.
Talia, come on up, talk to us about chickens. Fourteen years to get to this day.
And you have to introduce your two little kids.
Okay, I'm Talia Burckfeld. I live at 2617 Baltic Place. Thank you for repaving the road.
Oh, awesome.
Just, we've all talked about it for like three, four weeks now, how awesome it is. This is Sailor Burckfeld and Sage Burckfeld.
Oh, great names.
We currently own six chickens. We have done extensive research on how to care for said chickens. We have built our own coop with our bare hands. My husband built roosting boxes, or no, a rooster, and whatever they call the boxes. We clean the coop once a week, we feed, we water our chickens, and more importantly, it's taught the girls responsibility.
Absolutely.
Where your food comes from, because we have a garden as well. Nobody complained, just this guy that lived, we found out, I'm, I'm Italian, so I do a little investigating. And I found out, and I drove by his yard, and much like the yard you showed on TV, his yard was like that, so maybe you can go by there a little bit. So that's a little pot calling the kettle black. The, the main complaint was that it attracts rats. My family's been in Florida for 100 years. We've lived in Tampa mostly. My grandfather helped construct Ebor City and was big in the Italian club.
So you know about chickens?
I know a lot about chickens, and I know a lot about rats, because I'm a Florida native. And if you live in Florida and you think your backyard is not going to be, have a rat in it, or one come into your yard from rain, then maybe you should buy an apartment, because that's the beauty of homeownership. You can take care of your house. But the girls, we love the chickens. We have taken care of four of them since they were chicks. They yield us, sometimes I have two chickens that are laying, and sometimes I get four eggs in a span of 24 hours, so I'd say my chickens are relatively happy. We've only had one problem with mites, and we took care of it right away. I think if you are going to look at buying chickens, doing the appropriate research is key. I gave myself about six months to prepare and make sure it was a chore that I could handle, and we pay taxes, we own our homes. A lot of the homes in my area are rentals, so, you know, we've paid taxes, 10 years now I've been in this area. I love Pasco County, and I just want to keep my chickens, that's it. We're very excited being a part of this process, so.
How'd you find out about the chicken ordinance?
I wrote an email, because I got a code enforcement visit from a really lovely gentleman. He was really great. He was awesome. We were talking, he was even intrigued by one of my breeds, because I have ones that has feathers on the feet and just, you know, you get into it a little bit, it's a hobby. And he came by code enforcement, did, I'm not going to sit here and lie. So then I wrote an email, and they told me about the meeting, and I said, well, I'm going to go.
So I have a, I have a question, but it's for the girls. So what is your favorite part about taking care of the chickens?
My favorite part about the chickens is that I love how, how you get to bond with them.
You bond with them.
And what about Sailor? What's your favorite?
To them what? To them putting them to bed.
Putting them to bed?
Yeah, putting them away.
And you guys get to collect the eggs?
I mean, we built a giant pen. It's in, we moved it from by the fence when code enforcement came out, because, you know, we don't, we want to be considerate.
Yeah.
So we built a pen, we have boxes, and we have rainbow eggs, because we have a chicken that lays blue eggs, one lays greens.
So do you notice a difference?
I live at 2617. In a couple months, I'll be swimming in eggs. Please stop by and grab.
I have one more question for the girls.
Sure.
Do you guys notice a difference when you crack an egg from the store and crack one of your own eggs? The difference in the color?
Well, we haven't had to buy eggs for four or five months now.
That's awesome.
So we've kind of gotten a little bit more sustainability that way for ourselves, and.
A question.
Do you have a question?
Or a comment?
Yeah. A barred rock chicken.
Okay, well, we might take a visit, go see your chickens one day.
You can come over anytime, right?
Thank you, girl.
They would probably show it. Thank you.
No eggs for us?
Well, no, I, I had to make some doubled eggs, because it was getting overwhelming. So now I'm back, I have a dozen in the fridge, but I was at like, I think the other day, I was at like 36 eggs. I had more eggs than I knew what to do with, so I had to bake and get rid of them, you know?
Yeah, that's awesome. Well, thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Hey, bye.
Bye.
That was awesome.
And we're going to make those little ones pull a permit for this hobby.
I think they have to give up, I think they have to get rid of a chicken too. How many do we allow?
Four.
Yeah.
Okay, one of us ready for, you know, the oven.
Okay, fried chicken. Okay. Well, I'm, do we vote on this today?
No, you don't.
No, just informational? All right. Dade City.
Correct.
It's at the county court, county, the old county court.
Historic courthouse.
All right. Bye.
Please bring them back.
I wanted my granddaughter to be named Sailor, but I had no say. Okay, P sixty-eight? Oh, wait, we don't need a motion, right?
No, you don't need a motion. It's, the adoption hearing of the proposed.
Chicken ordinance.
Land Development Code amendments will be heard on November 12th, 2025, 1:30 in Dade City.
P sixty-eight, proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, October 5th, 2025.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I don't know how I follow that.
You can dance right up there.
Yeah, respectfully request Sailor to come back. I have a presentation. This is for you all to vote on, to take public comment for the redistricting of.
This isn't a zoning.
Of the mosquito-controlled district. So I have a presentation if you'd like to see it.
Nope. Do you guys need to see it?
The mosquitoes annoy the chickens.
Commissioner Oakley, do you care to see the mosquito?
No.
Now it's had it. Okay. This is, well, you want to say what you're doing?
Yes, well, we're taking any public comment today on the maps that you all voted on.
You need to describe what the agenda item is.
This is a resolution by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners establishing geographical sub-districts for the Pasco County Mosquito Controlled District pursuant to Chapter 2025 242 Laws of Florida, providing for district designations, population distribution, publication, and an effective date.
Okay, is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this item? Jonas, do you want to speak to this? I see you're still sitting here today.
You got to swear people in, this is public hearings.
This one does not need to be sworn.
That's not needed.
After, after. Okay.
All right. Anyone online?
No, we have no one online, right? No, no one online.
Move approval. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, P sixty-nine, and are we, no, not just one on this one either, right? Vacation, a vacation of an easement?
You might as well just.
Go for it?
Do it at this point.
Go ahead and do, do your thing.
There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. Staff or Planning Commission, if staff or Planning Commission has recommended approval and there is no opposition, the application will be considered by the Board without further presentation. If staff or Planning Commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition, the application will, if there, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or Planning Commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning, may at this time request the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address, and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this Board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the Board's Land Development Code. Madam Clerk, would you like to swear the public in?
Yes, thank you. Anyone speaking, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is true, is the truth? So help you God. Thank you. Thank you. So P 69, proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, September 21st, 2025, and September 28th, 2025.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Lori Jo Bryant, Real Property Division. The real property team has received a petition to vacate a portion of a platted drainage and utility easement filed by Thomas Giselle. The purpose for this vacation is to allow an installation of a pool and a surrounding deck. There were no objections to this petition and the team recommends approval.
All right, any other, any questions for the applicant? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this item? Against this item?
No, this is not consent, it's either way, but.
Okay, I just want to know if anyone's objecting to it, right? Okay, well, I'll take a motion then.
Move approval, second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay, next one?
P 70, proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, March 3rd, 2025, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings. We have multiple people signed up this morning.
Oh, I got a tickle.
Good afternoon, William Vermillion, Planning Development, Economic Growth. Before I get started today, there were some ex parte communications for this project that were sent to the clerk's office. This is PDE 267781, Enclave at Livingston Master Planned Unit Development by Academy of the Lakes. This is a rezoning request from AR Agricultural Residential to Imputy Master Planned Unit Development for the maximum development of 178 townhome dwelling units on 46 acres with the current future land use of residential six, six dwelling units an acre. This project is coming in roughly at 3.8 dwelling units an acre, well below the future land use. This is .25 miles north of State Road 54, directly west of 20 Mile Level Road and 1,000 feet east of the Collier Parkway and 1,500 feet northeast of the school, Academy of the Lakes. Here is a rough location map showing this project in the South Market area. Here is a contextual map of the imputy. You can see in the light blue shaded area, the subject side of the imputy outlined in red. Running north to south on this screen is the Livingston Avenue Extension. You can see the school in the black and blue shaded area as well as Terabella Imputy that currently exists. And just to the south, there are some existing platted townhomes. And just for some future context of the overall development, Terabella had 730 total dwelling units as well as some non-residential uses, medical office and shopping center. Location map, the current zoning district reflecting AR, the future land use map showing residential six. This is the overall imputy master plan highlighting the amount of wetlands on site, which is why the applicant decided to call this enclave to effectively an enclave tucked away behind these wetlands. And here, more illustratively, is the binding concept plan. Here you can see the extension of Livingston Avenue running north to south with the eight foot wide sidewalk being built within it and then taken into this project via their accessway. As you head north, the red units there are rear-loaded townhomes that front along that Central Boulevard and then along the outskirts, the front-loaded townhomes, providing a meaningful connection both to the north and to the west as well as the meaningful connection to Livingston Avenue, which takes you south to 54. Here is the roadway exhibit of the Livingston Avenue Extension, which is Exhibit 2 in your agenda packet, showing the applicant carrying this roadway from State Road 54 up to their project access as well as leaving the current alignment of 20 Mile Level Road as it exists there. This is the cross-section of Livingston Avenue, which, the ultimate build-out, of course. You have four 11-foot travel lanes, two per side with the median and the eight-foot sidewalk and the 12-foot sidewalk there showing is the second phase of the roadway. So, a little bit of background for all of the commissioners that tune into Planning Commission or don't tune into Planning Commission. In any event, when this project first came forward, there were some questions about the traffic analysis, the timing and phasing study. So there was a prolonged continuance until the time that the timing and phasing was redone by the applicant and submitted to staff for review prior to its eventual recommendation of approval at Planning Commission. And a couple of things happened subsequent as it related to the update timing, updated timing and phasing. So the first thing that the applicant did was use the 2050 long-range transportation plan. The previous study, because the project had been submitted some time ago, relied on the 2045 long-range transportation plan. And in the intermediate time of being submitted and finally making it to public hearings, the board had already adopted the 2050 LRTP, so the applicant was kind enough to go back and use the data from the newly adopted 2050 LRTP, in which case this found some cost feasible sections that were funded within the vicinity as highlighted here and some illustrative vision improvements out to 2050 as it related to State Road 54 and Collier Parkway. This project also is providing the right-of-way for the future extension of Livingston Avenue North along its project boundary for the overall extension as a parallel reliever to Collier Parkway. This, um, I believe the big sticking point here was originally, and currently, State Road 54 exceeded the volume capacity ratio of 1.0 established by the land development code. But this project was, was no, in no way bound by the code to mitigate for a road that had already been failing, of course. But what they decided to do and work with staff was to create improvements at the intersection of Livingston Road and State Road 54, which included a left-bound, a left-turn lane, a shared-through and right-turn lane and a right-turn lane. And what that did was increase the max VC ratio for that intersection by roughly 80%, which is fairly significant. And when I say it increased the max ratio for that, that is of the worst movement that happens at that intersection. It decreased the time, thereby decreasing the VC ratio of that intersection.
I have a question, can I ask?
Sure.
So, that road's already in failure, right, that road in question?
Uh, State Road 54.
But.
Not Livingston.
Right, but when they, when they make the improvements, what, how does that help?
So it does, um.
You have a map of that or no?
Uh, there's, I mean, I have a map of the road, I don't have a map on the slide of the project distribution and the VC ratio tables. They're included in the agenda packet, but essentially what it did was the intersection of Livingston and State Road 54, by doing these improvements, they essentially increased the capacity of the queuing for that intersection, alleviating some of the stresses of the longest turning motion. So while they couldn't fully alleviate for the VC ratio on 54, no, no project would be able to alleviate the current volume capacity ratios of 54. What they did was ameliorate for their direct intersection improvements that will in turn help the entire area as a whole in terms of traffic.
So with the traffic study.
Mr. Engel just told me that in the applicant's presentation, they'll have some geometries up for you. I just don't have it in my staff slide. And Mr. Steve Henry could probably explain this a little bit better than I, but I did my best.
You did great.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it. With all that being said, we added some conditions as well about construction access on 20 Mile Level Road and Livingston Avenue because that was some of the concern from the public at the Planning Commission. So we added some, some conditions of approval that specified construction access at the time for the residents. There's one variation, which is to not require a stubout to the south. Like I mentioned before, there's that existing platted townhome neighborhood and any north-south motion from this neighborhood can be done on Livingston Avenue, which is that extension road they're building. With all of that being said, this comes with a recommendation of approval from Planning Development Economic Growth as well as the Planning Commission. I'm available for any questions.
Ma'am Chair?
Yep.
So on the, on the access, um, condition. On Condition 25, it says the applicant shall stabilize Livingston Road and use the extension for construction access. 20 Mile Level Road should only be used to construct utility improvements and mobilize equipment to stabilize Livingston Road extension. Why wouldn't you have all the construction traffic on the 20 Mile Road instead of the Livingston Road where other residents are living there right now?
It's a, it's my interpretation of that condition, what it's, what it's stating is in order for them to build Livingston Avenue, they have to use 20 Mile Level Road to construct Livingston Avenue, at which point they construct it, they wouldn't be using 20 Mile Level Road anymore, but they do need a road to access the construction.
So if I'm gonna have all this construction traffic that's on these homes that are existing there right now, why wouldn't I want them to use 20 Mile Level Road for their construction?
Let me make, let me make sure I'm following your question correctly. I can feel Barbara behind me.
The road's coming in, you know, Livingston Road, you got 20 Mile Road. Why wouldn't you have all the, all their construction traffic using 20 Mile Road getting up there as opposed to Livingston?
And I don't believe that road's paved, is it, 20 Mile Road?
May I? Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard. 20 Mile Level Road is the existing road, it's not paved. The residents at the neighborhood meeting on May 12th asked me a lot of questions, sometimes they're not great questions, but this was a great question, they said, "What are you gonna do for construction access? Are you gonna use 20 Mile Level Road? Are we gonna have to deal with your construction traffic?" And so I worked with my team. We are not going to use 20 Mile Level Road, which is the road those residents currently use. The condition says we have to use our road that we're extending, what's really your vision road. We're extending Livingston Road, Livingston Avenue Extension from where it currently is the end of it up to access our projects. We are building part of your vision road to access our project. So that's what the condition is saying, hey, construction traffic, use that new road that you're, that you're doing, which is your vision road, stay off of 20 Mile Level Road. Two exceptions, one is there will be utility improvements, the county already has a utility line within 20 Mile Level Road, so there's some utility improvements. And the second exception is we have to get the trucks up to the area where we're going to stabilize in order to bring our construction access up the new road. So it's absolutely written to keep construction traffic off of where the residents drive every day.
All right, let me ask another question. It says on the next Condition 13.
Well, is she gonna, do we want her to do her presentation?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, I got, I was asking staff a question, I didn't ask her, I asked staff a question.
Okay, Barbara, we'll get back to you.
That's fine, I'm just supplementing.
Let the commissioners ask their staff questions.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Jack.
All right, so Condition 13, you've got to modify the northbound approach lanes of intersection 54 and Livingston to provide the following improvements you talked about, but you're not doing it until prior to the issuance of the building permit for the 90th dwelling unit. Why aren't we doing these improvements immediately?
Sure, and so that was negotiated with staff and essentially it came down to the traffic numbers being permissible below the 90th unit threshold.
Didn't you say the road's already failing?
State Road 54.
Okay, so I'm talking, these are the improvements we're talking about, right?
Correct, intersection improvements.
So if I'm gonna do improvements on 54, I got a road that's failing already. Why am I gonna put all this construction traffic at the start? Now I'm gonna bring all these 90 new residents coming in and now I'm gonna go improve the roadway? This intersection should be improved before anything gets started out there.
And I believe 20 Mile Road is failing, isn't it?
No, ma'am, 20 Mile Level Road will be well within its capacity.
But it's half dirt and half paved, right?
It will be paved up to the project entrance, correct. The remaining northbound will be dirt, but it wouldn't be failing from a capacity standpoint. It would be, that'd be more of a substandard road question.
So we're gonna put homes on a substandard road possibly?
It's a substandard road to the north, but not once they improve.
I don't know how the board feels about that 90th unit before the intersection's being done, but.
Well, let's listen to the applicant's presentation and then we can ask these questions. Do you guys have any questions?
I've got one, I've got one more.
Okay, sure.
So from what I understand, staff, our own county staff was actually looking at flooding concerns up there. A bit to the north where the water flows, there's like one culvert there, can't take it all. Staff is actually looking at it right now, from what I understand, looking at the engineering. Will the improvements or what improvements need to be made to keep these people from flooding? What's your knowledge of that?
That is a, that's a great question and I can let our stormwater team or Mr. Couch speak to that. I know that they both went out on-site to look at the culvert you're talking about. To my knowledge, there was, the property in which the culvert is located, the gentleman that owns that property wasn't willing to have modifications done to the culvert that's exacerbating the issues out there currently.
Oh.
Could you pull up the mountain map for us?
So I believe that Mr. Couch was on record at Planning Commission saying that he was more than willing to help with the stormwater specifically in that location, but he reached some private constraints.
All right, so from our staff, you mentioned our stormwater team, who from our stormwater team here can talk to it?
I guess I'm putting on my stormwater hat. That was a joke. There should be stormwater at a minimum, is there anybody online from stormwater?
We got map pages?
Yeah, can we, can we look at the mountain map, please?
Sure.
No, we'll wait for that. What I've heard talking to stormwater team is they're looking to see what it's gonna take. The water flows up that way, it's an issue, one culvert may not be enough, it may need three. They're studying it right now. I was actually very surprised to see this coming forward, knowing that study's going on. It's very similar to me to the Little Road Jasmine project where we got flooding issues that are there, known. Staff's looking at it now because the developer didn't do it. It's delayed that project for all six months as we're now finding out that they've got to figure it out. What I don't want to see is us to go approve a project that could be flooding people upstream, or downstream, let's say, from this project. Until we know at least what the situation is.
So here's the situation. Now Stein, this is where county attorney's office is involved. There's a resident north of here that has, this is a litigious issue that has narrowed the flow of water into Cypress Creek. And prior to the storms and during the storms, what, what this homeowner has done has negatively impacted many residents downstream backing water up on them and almost into their barns because of their modifications. What this one resident has done and the county has offered to fix this at no cost if they sign, and same with the Water Management District, if they sign and act, allow, allow the Swift Mud and/or the county to fix it on the taxpayer dime, that homeowner, from what I understand, won't allow it. What this homeowner has done, irregardless of this project, has impacted the flow of water into Cypress Creek and had a negative impact on neighboring properties and it backs up the water into the basin that the towns have had a map where all the water flows in to the pond. This one particular property needs to be fixed in the county attorney's office. I know is trying to work through a remedy on this, but I don't know how far they've gotten.
Mr. Swift Mud involved because they.
I'll let the county attorney's office speak to the intimacies, because of its ongoing nature, I don't wanna, wanna misspeak on this. Because it needs to be, irregardless of this project, this has to be fixed.
Yeah.
What this, what this homeowner's doing is wrong.
So if that's, that's the case, I'll, that's an issue that needs to be dealt with. Whether it's, we gotta study it first to figure out what the solution is, propose it to them to resolve it. Frankly, I, yeah, so frankly, to go allow a development to come in knowing you've got a flooding issue right next door, and I mean, I'll tell you, from 2004, every, every single hearing we had coming forward, I had them pulling up the flood maps. I was showing the flood maps all the time just so we could see what was going on in the area. This is very similar to that to me, that if you get people flooding in the area now and you're gonna go make, have a development come in and make it worse, it doesn't make sense. It's not fair to those other people, not the one guy, but the other people are gonna make it worse for them. Why would I do that? I would want to get this thing fixed first.
I'm not so sure it's gonna make it worse. I'm not so sure this project's gonna make it worse.
If you have more impervious surface, the water's gonna go somewhere, it's gonna increase the flow.
Well, it depends if they do stormwater ponds. Barbara, hang on a second, I know you want to speak. So what are you, are you pulling up some GIS or what are you guys working on? Okay, is that gonna take long? And in the meantime, did we find anyone from stormwater to get on the line? I don't know which ACH is, we're missing an ACH.
Branford.
Yes.
We're missing that ACH. Where is it, where, where is that, where is Branford? Where's Branford today?
I think Mike's finding out.
He's what?
Finding out.
Oh. Oh.
Why you put on vision roads? You should be putting up stormwater.
The Milton map?
Everything's clicked on this map.
Nictaros Pito is playing Dorming Hamlet Growth. The vision road, just because the map is a little dark, we just added the vision road map for contextual purposes to help orient. But this is the Milton aerials. I think they were taken 48 hours after the storm. Usually darker areas are indicating locations of flooding.
And where's the parcel here? Where the arrow is, or, well...
Livingston Road?
Is this gonna work?
Maybe the whole area.
Parcel should be in this zone right here.
So the whole area is flooded?
Where's the parcel you were speaking of, Commissioner Whitman?
So is the whole area flooded by this map? Is that what you're telling me?
This is just an aerial image. I would rely on the site engineer to report on what kind of stormwater flooding actually existed on the site post Milton.
Did you say earlier, the darker it is, the more flooding there was?
Yeah, usually, but the image is hard to read, so we wanna make sure that the engineer can speak to it specifically.
I was gonna say, is there a different map?
I was gonna say, if I look at Livingston Road, I look to the right where the development is, it's actually drier over by the development compared to here. Is that pretty much how you're showing darkness is where it's flooded, and the lightest side is not where it's not?
That's generally how the aerial is indicating. But the imagery is kinda dark, so you have to go to the facts on the ground, which is why I would rely on the engineer to report on it.
All right, while we wait for the engineer, why don't we click on Observe Flooding, see what that shows?
Not there. And Seth, where's the gentleman's house you were talking about?
We'll get a clearer map.
Well, I think when Barbara does her presentation, we'll see some of those maps, too.
So in between where it says Cory Parkland Livingston, there's a pond there. And the water flows from the community to the right.
Bella something?
Yeah.
That pond right there?
So it flows... That's the extension. So it backs up. I don't have the exact address. So you get a neighborhood, the water flows, it comes out of the community that's over here to the right, and it dumps into this pond waterway here, then works its way out. And then, and you can see kinda the creek line.
Behind the school?
Behind, no, it's to the...
Behind the park?
Need a pointer.
Why don't you get up there?
Yeah, why don't you go up there and...
Why don't professional staff do this?
Because we don't have anybody here, I don't understand it. Where's our ACHA?
Madam Chairman, I would recommend that you table this discussion. Go to the applicant, have their presentation, and then...
Because they may have these maps.
Yeah.
And explain things. So, all right, you guys get, we're gonna, you can ask more questions.
I thought we had a...
Maybe we'll get someone from stormwater, but we'll let Barbara make it.
Thought we had VIP laser pointers up here, like...
Yeah, but that TV's angled, so... All right, let's hear the presentation, maybe we'll get some of these questions in.
Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard. I have a presentation, or I can, we can work on addressing your questions. I'm happy to do either way. But I...would you wanna hear the presentation, or we want... Because Jeremy, I can tell you that...
Some of the things you can...
With regard to drainage, let me just, and then we can go through if we wanna go through this or not. But with regard to drainage, we didn't come here today, and, oh my goodness, there's a drainage concern out here. We started a long time ago. And Jeremy can go through all of the facts. He knows it very well. He did survey work on his own dime to figure out the problem. It's a research at all, because all that goes into the permitting that he's done on the site. So I think Jeremy will be able to go through drainage and walk you all through. He's got all the maps. He was out there after Milton. I think you'll find that interesting. We talked about construction traffic, timing of the intersection improvements. I worked with my team. Instead of the 90th unit, we can agree to prior final building inspection for the first residential unit. We can certainly move that up, if that's the pleasure of the board. But let me run through this real quick. We started this, our first public hearing was in March of this year, seven months ago. When we saw we had neighbors, a bunch of neighbors that had concerns, we immediately continued it, didn't have that hearing. And then we had a neighborhood meeting on May 12th, and we went to Planning Commission on May 15th. We had a first hearing. There were still things that Planning Commission wanted us to look at and address. And we did that, went back to Planning Commission on September 18th. So none of this has been rushed, none of this has been pushed. This has been handled methodically, and really making sure that we've looked at the issues. We've listened to our neighbors, listened to staff. So this is the land use. We sit in Res 6, in a sea of Res 6. This isn't rural, this is suburban density. We have Res 9 next to us, that's the church, the Catholic church. The staff showed our binding plan. These are, this is our product. We have front load and rear load. Been asking clients to do rear load. This client has bringing forth front load and rear load, 25, 24-foot units, which are wider units. You can see the density allowed under the Res 6 is 215, and our density is 178. So we're less than what the land use allows. Project compatibility, what's around us. Along 20-mile level road within Terabella, when you drive down 20-mile level road, and you can see that picture's from 20-mile level road, that's Village of Terabella. That's a three-story, 311-unit apartment complex, 14 buildings. 16.37 units per acre has been found compatible along 20-mile level road. Moving on, when you drive, actually before you get to the apartments, I should have this in reverse order. If you're driving along 20-mile level road, before you get to the apartment, you get to Keystone Place at Terabella. That is a four-story project with 140 apartments, consisting of independent, 62 dependent, independent, 56 assisted living, and 22 memory care. Four stories. To our south is Huntington Ridge Townhomes, and I know they are represented here today. It's 90 units, and it's five units per acre. Plotted townhomes, similar to ours. Our density is on a developable acre, 5.32. So very similar density to what you see at to the south. As been mentioned by staff, and which I discussed, I came up and kinda supplemented the conversation you had with your staff about construction access. This was a condition that was resulted from the neighborhood meeting and a very good question from one of the neighbors. At Planning Commission, we had a neighbor from Huntington Ridge, and they are here today, asking about what the buffering was gonna be between our townhomes and Huntington Ridge townhomes. The code requires no buffer. But listened to the neighbor and proposed a buffer. It's on our binding plan. It's a 10-foot buffer, 6-foot vinyl fence. A lot of times your buffers don't require a fence, it's an optional thing. You can have plantings or a fence. We committed to a fence and type D plant, type B plantings. As you've heard about transportation from staff, there is an existing level of service efficiency at that intersection of 54 and Livingston. Our contribution to that intersection is very small. We would increase the, any delay at that intersection by seconds. And importantly, the land development code says, your land development code, your rules for development of property in Pasco, is that this project is not responsible for reducing or eliminating the existing deficiencies. So it could've just come here and said, 3.6 seconds, code says we're not responsible for existing deficiencies. But we didn't do that. We stopped in May, and four months, we worked on what can we do as a mitigation project with your staff, with FDOT. Four months, we worked on what can we do to make that intersection better and mitigate any impact we'd have on that intersection. So that is what we end up doing. We end up doing four different things to mitigate transportation impact. One is, we are extending your vision road. Where it ends today at the memory care, independent apartments, that project, up to our project as access. We're providing the right of way for the further extension of your vision road. We are doing the intersection improvement, which I just discussed the timing of, and changing the timing of what we agreed with with staff. Number three is the intersection improvement. I have Steve Henry here, I have our drainage folks here. Our project engineer can do a much better job, but we also pay mobility fees. And you can see the tally on the amount of impact fees and mobility fees this project will pay. With that, I'm happy to bring up and talk drainage. And any traffic questions now, or do you wanna hear from public comment? And then we can do that in rebuttal. Happy to do whatever helps you all get your questions answered.
I'd say keep presenting.
Excuse me?
Keep presenting the stormwater transportation.
Okay.
Keep presenting.
Okay, great. Jeremy, Jeremy Couch, Tampa Civil.
Commissioners, Jeremy Couch with Tampa Civil. I have been sworn. So Tampa Civil has been engaged in working on this project for almost two years. Very early on, we identified that downstream, there may be issues. Our property is up on a hill compared to the surrounding properties. Our property is up near elevation 80, and the issues downstream are in the elevation 50s. I can explain to you from the start where the issues are, or what we're doing to help mitigate the issues. Or would you like me to start? Where the issues are? Great. Someone have an Elmo that I can hand you documents? I'm gonna go back and forth, because I don't think there's a mic I can have an easy Elmo. For context, I placed a star on where our property is. You can see the wetlands to the southeast of the star. 20-mile level road is the dirt road that goes up the middle. Water generally goes east and north. If you see on the northeast side of the screen, that is... I could just point as you go along, but it's your show. In the northeast corner, that is actually Cypress Creek. That's Interstate 75 for drainage.
Oh, that's, I didn't know. That northern, northeastern corner, northwestern corner? Northeast?
It goes like this.
Okay. Right through that orange grove right there?
Here we go. This aerial is from 1957. This is our site here. You can see historically it was a grove, wetlands low, you can see 20-mile level. Over here, unfortunately, where there are homes now, this used to be a large wetland. There was a creek that went this way and drained the area into Cypress Creek. Sometime around 1967, they decided to make land. This is really common in this area, there was a lot of groves built. They dredged and filled, and you could see that the drainage was still good. It was still open, but the wetland got filled. By '95, there were a lot of homes, one-acre lots, two-acre lots, homes had been settled. So historically, the issues that occur here have happened from the past. Let me kinda show you a little bit more about what has exacerbated the issue. So Tampa Civil, could you pull that a little to the left, please? There, thank you. So historically, this is where the large wetland was. There is a road here called Tyrell Lane, and you can see where the old ditch is. I'm gonna show you some pictures. But Tyrell Lane was built through the middle of the wetland, which created a large embankment. It's a very small pipe that exists there today. As the water flows north through the wetlands, and I'll show you pictures, it gets to this location here where there are two pipes. This is kinda the Hatfields and the McCoys. There is one pipe that's large, I believe it's 30 inches. And another pipe immediately downstream of it, that is 18 inches higher and much smaller. And I'll show you the pictures of those. And essentially, the water's blocked. So there's an embankment, the water's blocked, and where historically, through illegal acts, whether they were illegal at the time or not, the water's been blocked, there's a large embankment built, and the water can't get through. Once it gets through, it's wide open. So there is one choke point where the water can't get through. We furnished the county with all the survey data that they needed to fix this. We reached out, we worked with county attorney's office, we submitted documentation. We have a SWF MUD permit. The SWF MUD permit agrees with me that we're gonna make things better. I'll show you how much better. We have a county permit to Masquerade that shows it impervious. The county's reviewed it, the county also agrees. Let me show you the level of what's going on, though.
Can you guys reposition that just a little better?
So this is south of Tyrell Lane. When Milton came through, these homes didn't flood, but they did not have access to their homes. This is the north side of Tyrell Lane, you can see it's clear, it's flowing. Then all of a sudden, we get north, we have a large pipe, 36-inch pipe, almost full. Immediately north, 36-inch pipe still full.
Wait, is that turned?
Yeah.
This is, again, north.
Are these different pipes, or the same pipe?
Same pipe, other side. Then you get to the...
Can you turn it? Can you turn it? Not up...
So this is where the big pipe has been filled with small pipe.
What?
Here's another picture of big pipes filled with small pipe. So essentially, to the south, it's holding water all the way up, 18 inches high. So this entire basin to the south fills up, fills up, fills up, where it historically drained out to Cypress Creek, fills all the way up, and then pops off. Through this, small pipe. As it gets north, this is, to the north, these are pipes that lead to the interstate of drainage. So right here, this location, this is where it's 18 inches higher than everything to the south. So all this to the south, 20-plus acres, 30 acres of Cypress, has 18 inches less storage because of this issue.
Was that caused by the homeowner?
The landowner?
The landowner, I mean. Is he the one that really doesn't want anybody on his property as well?
Nikki Spiratos is working on this, and this issue...
That one's upside down.
This issue dates back to when Commissioner Moore was in office. That's how long this boxing match has been going on.
Well, it shouldn't be allowed to go on.
So we don't, we don't know who actually impeded the water? So we don't, we don't know who actually impeded the water. We don't know if it was like this when this person purchased this house. We don't know if he did it, but we know that there is a blockage. The county attorney's office has tried to reach out, they've offered to do the work. They want an easement.
Yeah, Nikki's right there.
And, and, and the person doesn't want to give up an easement.
Well, they can't be allowed to cause harm to their neighbor, right?
During the storm, we met with customers downstream from them and what this is doing, irregardless of this project, has a negative impact, but I'll.
Right, because those people couldn't get to their homes.
But they almost lost property and their property was dammit ballot, Ms. Spiritoz or county attorney, since this is kind of a funky issue here. Don't want to misspeak, but whatever enforcement action may or may not take place.
Can we hear from Nikki?
Yeah.
So, so what we can do are our contribution to the problem, because we don't have the rights to go on their property. We tried to engage, we had a big meeting with a lot of people, it was a knockdown drag out, is because we're up on the hill, we're higher, we're significantly higher, we're 15 feet higher.
Wow.
We were way higher, almost 20 feet higher. We can hold the water up on the hill. And we've demonstrated with our swift mud permit and a letter that we furnished to county stormwater with calculations that in the 25-year event, once every 25 years, we can reduce the discharges by 30% from our site, which is about 19 CFS. That's significant, 19 cubic feet.
But you know what? Why should you have to pay, this, this project have to pay for this guy's illegal use of his property?
I don't disagree, Commissioner, but we're just trying to be good neighbors. When I, like I said, two years ago, I went out there, saw there was an issue, took it upon myself to figure out what the issue is and what can we do? And so.
Do you mind if we hear from Nikki just to see where we're at?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Nikki Spiritoz, Pesco County Attorney's Office. How are you doing this afternoon, Commissioners? So the situation we have downstream of this project is that this is a constrained open basin. So unlike a typical open basin, there's a choke point and it's constrained. And Mr. Couch has provided additional survey data and has been very generous in his ideas to help improve the situation. But it is an existing situation. So the person who has the driveway, that has the smaller culvert, he was not the property owner when the smaller culvert was put in, according to the records with the EP. But he did purchase a property. It does have the smaller culvert. I believe it was proposed that the applicant replace the culvert, but I don't know where the communications over the last couple of weeks have gone with the complainant. So I don't know if that's an option or not. The county doesn't have the right to just go onto the property and change out the size of the culvert. So my understanding of Florida administrative code is that the applicant has to design for the conditions that exist. That's the condition that exists.
Nikki, I thought that, I thought that the county and the water management district together would fix it at its cost, if the property owner allowed it, not a third party.
The county was willing to put in the correct sized culvert, or I always should say, we don't know what the correct sized culverts are for those driveways. There's more than one, okay? But, but they're each different. But the county was willing to put in the larger culvert for the property owner at no cost to that property owner. The property owner didn't want to give the county an easement and then we agreed that we could do it with a temporary construction easement. And the property owner was unwilling. But that's not the property owner who's at most at risk of flooding, it's the one upstream of him who's most at risk of flooding. So the person who doesn't want to give us the easement is not the one who's most at risk.
What about civilly, civil suit wise?
That's always an option, extremely expensive.
For the neighbor?
Extremely expensive.
I have a question for this.
Yes, ma'am.
The civil engineer. That's okay. So you're saying you're 15 feet higher and you would be able to hold all your water? Can you explain how you would be able to?
Sure. So right now, our property is steep. It's kind of a small hill. If you've been to that like Collier Parkway 54 area, it's pretty high, there's a ridge there. And so what happens right now is the runoff from our property shoots down the hill, immediately hits the wetlands and ends up over near Terrell Lane where the embank, the first embankment is. When we develop, we'll build retention ponds at a higher elevation. We'll trap our water, we are trapping our water and we're slow releasing it significantly lower. The code allows me to release it at the same rate that the pre-development exists to make my ponds small. We've made our ponds larger to hold the water and release it slower in order to do our small part.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
While you're up there, Jeremy, I want to thank you too. When we did our meeting, you did tell us about the issue and then working with staff, I knew there was something that had to be addressed. And I was very surprised to actually see this coming forward, knowing staff was working it, so.
Yes, sir.
That's from my reaction. When you're holding the water, it's for a 25-year storm, is that right?
So we hold it for, we designed for the 25 and the 100. So in the 25, we're doing a reduction of 30.16 and for the 100, we're doing a reduction of about 11%.
Okay, and if we have a larger storm, then you're not going to be able to hold the water, it's still going to release out?
I mean, if we have another act of God event, it's.
It's gonna happen.
It's everybody, it's all of us. We, we have to have a standard to design to. It's like a house, we don't design it for a 500 mile an hour wind, we just have to pick a number and work with that.
Well, on an open basin, you have one set of standards, a closed basin would be a different standard?
Closed basins are a different standard.
And be, what storm event, what'd that be?
So you'd still design for the same storm events, you just treat the water differently. You have a volume problem when you're closed, the water has nowhere to go. This instance, the water has somewhere to go, it's just there's, it's, there's, a closed basin is like a dead end road. The road ends, it goes nowhere. This is like if you're on a three-lane highway and it chokes up to one lane. All you can do is slow down the amount of traffic you put into that road to help out.
Okay. Let me get to a legal question if I could. So when anybody's going to develop, they can't change the water flow, it's got to keep the regular flow. Evidently, the person that has this other smaller culvert now has changed the flow. I know that if someone buys a property, whether it had previous things done to it, we make those people, if they're in for permitting, they'll fix it. Now clearly, this person's not in for permitting, but they are, the property has affected, a negative change that affects everybody else. Is there something we have legally to go after this person to get this culvert to be opened up because they have changed the water flow? I gotta think Swift Mud's got some type of power. They did it for the Legends down in Trinity and we had that little culvert that got blocked to a foot. We had Swift Mud went in there, made them open it up and they had to pay for it even to go through it. If I can make the reserve down there in Trinity go do it, why can't I have this guy go bring it back to where it was before too?
Swift Mud has stated they don't have jurisdiction over this single-family residence property.
Even if it connects to the flow of everything else that goes on?
Right.
I had that same look.
We had this problem in Sierra Pines and this is now Commissioner Yeager's problem. We had one homeowner who had the ditch that drained the whole neighborhood and he wouldn't let the county into, to clean, clean the drain. It was flooding the whole community.
Could we go eminent domain and take the property? If you could prove a public purpose? I think we could. They had all these people flooding. But Ms. Spiritoz is our eminent domain lawyer and she's giving me this look that that lime just stepped in it, so.
Yay, one more file.
Go back to the podium. Nikki, what do you think? Is there any way to make this happen, to get this fixed?
Well, my understanding is that the applicant has represented that they have looked at this location as a downstream node and that their stormwater modeling calculations have indicated that they will not have an adverse impact. Is that correct, Mr. Couch? So.
Well, all right, so not even for this development, but forget this development for a moment. I'm just talking about the situation with the pipe that's been shrunk or raised.
Right.
Or both. Can you, is there some way to make, get, establish a public purpose to fix, fix that? So every, the other 25 homes or even hundreds of homes down below don't get flooded because the water is now can flow out freely if we take over this culvert and fix it?
We can consult with the code enforcement team and see if we can issue a citation.
Chair, I mean, we need, we need the water to flow to the well fields for public purpose, right?
I think. Let me consider the eminent demand matter, but I, I think the citation approach might be more effective.
Was it DEP that originally permitted it? Somebody originally permed?
There was no, I don't know if there was an original permit, honestly. It appears as though it dates back to the ditch and drain of the mosquito control district's operations. Subsequent to that, driveway culvert was put in and subsequent to that, it was sleeved. DEP came out to the property and when they discovered that it wasn't the current owner who had sleeved the culvert, they didn't want to take any enforcement action against the current property owner. So.
Well.
That's, you know.
I'm sorry, but you can't let someone flood your community. I, I think, well, let's take that up as a separate issue at another time.
It's a big problem. Let me go a little further with it. So if they made a policy decision not to go after it.
Right.
But they still had the power, do you think, to go after it if they chose to?
I think so.
Okay, so maybe we get some state legislative to help to make that happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but, hang on, but our own code was strong enough to go cite and go after it?
We can definitely speak to the code enforcement team and see if we, see who our witness would be for that situation.
Our witness would be?
Yes, yes, they need a engineer support.
Okay.
There he is, he just raised his hand. He just raised his hand. He's got all the documentation and photos.
Is that Jeremy? Did Jeremy raise? Yes, so that, that's, that's our main issue, is who would be our expert.
All right, so seeing where we are right now, this is my opinion. We have an applicant who's willing to take on the burden of holding the water so that this doesn't have adverse effects to his neighbors, which to me is very unfortunate because that isn't their responsibility, but they, looks like they've remedied the situation at their expense, but we still, I mean, for the 25-year event, right? But we still need to go and have this guy open up his culvert.
So one of my concerns is if the road, if those people couldn't get to their homes that already live there and we're going to add more homes.
Well, let's let, let's let them speak to that.
Okay.
Barbara Willhite, so my engineer has just explained that we exceeded all the requirements and we're doing more to hold water than water's moving today. We actually, it's not just saying it either, he has permits, he's actually done all the work. He's got the Swift Mud permit and he's got the permit from the county, so he's done all of that work. So we have exceeded what we are required to do to make it better. We, as one project, can't fix this, so.
Commissioners, you had questions on traffic, did we? I don't think we got to that.
I, I'll say that just with the, with the traffic part, as far as the access goes, having it to the 90th unit, I appreciate the offer to come out of the first unit, but frankly, those of you who have may have seen all the emails and whatever from the estates, even from Meadow Oaks, all the construction traffic going through neighborhoods that disrupt everything, at the minimum, I'd want to see that those, those infrastructure projects that are going to be done, done before it even starts, to at least take some of the burden off, because there will be trucks that could be lined up there, seven o'clock in the morning, coming in, coming out and really hurting these people for their, for their access.
Yeah, we have, what we've agreed to is reasonable. We went way beyond the code requires, we have, and what we've agreed to today is a reasonable timing for those improvements to the intersection overall at 54 and Livingston. And we've agreed to construction access, we've agreed that we're not going to be on 20-mile level road, we're going to be on the road that we, we construct. So I, my, I think we've been more than reasonable in what we proposed relating to accelerating the improvements to that intersection, I think is reasonable.
You're entitled to the thought.
What's that?
You're entitled to the thought.
I know, I know.
The traffic engineer is here. Do we want to listen to the traffic engineer?
We also have to listen to public comment, too, to get their, their comments.
Yeah, but we're, the applicant hasn't finished their presentation. Did you want the traffic engineer to speak as part of your team?
Sure.
We'll bring Steve up.
Good afternoon. Steve Henry, Linkson Associates, 5023 West Laurel, Tampa, 33607. So as Barbara, I have been sworn, yes. As Barbara had indicated, you know, one of the things we do, and we went back from planning commission, was we were looking at what mitigation we can do. Now again, this is only a small town home project and you've got the intersection of 54 and Livingston. So we looked at a number of different options. One was to simply come up with a bigger improvement, pay a prop share, but then nothing would really be done in the intersection, we'd pay a prop share and nothing may get done. So we, that's what took some time was looking at what a project of this scale could do to that intersection to help mitigate the impact for it. And in addition to that, then we met with the county, we also met with DOT, since it is a DOT road. And when you look at the numbers, and this is where we came up with it, when you look at the numbers, I'll, I'll put this on the Elmo.
Do you want to move it down a little bit?
So when, when we looked at the numbers at this intersection, the, the northbound movement, the northbound right turn movement was in, in Build Out, which is 2030, is over almost 300 cars turning right. The through volume was only 50. And when you look at that area, you can see that the northbound right turn lane is fairly short. And you got a disparity between the through volume and the right turn volume. So that's when we came up with the improvement to take that northbound through movement lane and make it a shared through right and then a right turn lane. So what you've done now is taken, instead of 300 cars being in one lane, you've got 400 cars in two lanes. So it helps the overall capacity, doesn't change the timing of the intersection, but it, but helps, doesn't help, doesn't change the phasing of it, but adds that additional capacity, allows it to flow a little bit better than, and that, in fact, what happens also is that northbound right queues into the through lane, which then creates some problems. So this kind of helps balance the intersection and helps with the capacity. But again, given that we got a relatively small project, we're trying to come up with something that would at least mitigate the impact, which we believe that this improvement will mitigate the impact to the intersection. Certainly not going to fix the intersection, takes a lot more than that to fix the intersection, but it certainly mitigates it. And as indicated, by code, we're not even required to do that, but that's what the developer had agreed to do, was to come up with some type of mitigation to help the intersection and mitigate their impacts to it.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So in looking at this map, those three lanes there, are the lumber lanes changing or just?
No, no, we're just restriping. Now we have to, we have to do, there are, there are a fairly significant amount of signal improvements that have to be done to be able to accommodate those movements to be done. But yes, we are, we will be restriping the intersection, again, to balance out the volumes there.
Are you talking about from the north going south or?
No, the, yeah, the, the south going north.
I just drove Livingston last, last Monday. Scary road at night. There's no shoulders, there's no sidewalks, no lights. That's not your issue. South of 50, I'm talking about south of 54. South of 50, I'm talking about south of 54. It was not pleasant. Um... How many units are you guys putting in?
178, I think.
178, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Wait.
So to Commissioner Mariano's point, if it's just predominantly restriping for this intersection, right, that's what I'm hearing is predominantly just restructuring and striping on this segment of road?
Correct. It is restriping, but again, part of that is we have to do a lot of the signal, as far as the signal modifications, to allow that geometry to work. There's, that's actually where more of the cost is in the signal modifications than it is the pavement markings.
So how long does that typically take?
To permit that, you know, permit it probably four months to construct it. Once you get a permit, 90, 120 days.
From your schedule of work, when did, when would you start that process?
Well, I think what we have agreed to in this case is that this would be installed prior to the, the first review of a CO. Actually, they call it the first, the, the last review of the building inspection, I guess what they call it, but basically CO, prior to the first CO.
Before the first CO would be done.
Correct. Correct. That's what we're agreeing to.
So if the first person would potentially be living here, all this work would be done?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this? We have two signed up. We have two signed up, Susan Lang and George Kovalu. Is George still here? Okay. You can go up to Susan.
I'm right, I have to.
They'll come up together.
You guys are refreshing. Thank you very much.
They'll come up together.
Very refreshing.
Please, please.
My name is Susan Lang. I reside at 2720, 20-mile level road, been there almost 33 years, next month. I have a little map. I'm just going to talk pretty much to traffic. With this new proposed development going through Livingston and 54, it, it's a crazy intersection. It's just kind of a three-way. It goes a little bit further back, if you can see the map. It, it allows access to the senior living, it allows access to Vinizia Drive, which is the back road to those commercial developments in the front. It's also the only access to those apartments they mentioned earlier, and it also provides access to all the homeowners in Terabella. They complain all the time about their access next to Florida Medical because it's a brick road and it gets used a lot and they have to pay you to fix it. Anyway, the point is, the infrastructure to support the development is just not there, it seems not to be there, for 20-mile level and 54 intersection. I did a research with the DOT system, SOJAS. It's a 10-year snapshot from 2011 to 2020 in terms of accidents and injuries and fatalities. And in comparison, the, the Livingston intersection over that, that 10-year period had over 200 accidents with two fatalities. To compare that, Curlew in 19, in the same period of time, had 769 accidents with three fatalities. Now, that's a big difference in number in terms of how many accidents versus deaths versus our little 20-mile level and Livingston or Livingston and 54 intersection. One of the concerns on 20-mile level, it is a lime rock road, it is county maintained, and it is dead end. We only have one way out. The concern and, and discussion with the traffic while they develop is when that road's blocked, we don't have a back door. So there's no way out. During the hurricanes last October, we did have flooding, we were able to get by it, it wasn't terrible. But the after effect, we had some tree company come in to do some tree repair, and I don't know who was responsible for it, it doesn't matter, they blocked our road. Nobody could get in or out. We have one, one direction. So traffic is a huge, huge issue at that intersection at Livingston. It's dangerous, it has a lot of activity, and it, the numbers are just super high. There was talk about infrastructure of expanding County Line Road to support the 54 avenues, things like that. All I ask is, before the approval goes on this development, do the infrastructure to support it. That would be fine, and then we could all get along great. The emergency response times right now are huge. Year-to-date, there's been like 174 calls to that senior living facility. This is only October. Well, I guess it's already October. And Florida Medical, they've had like 76 emergency calls. So they're using that intersection, this is emergency activity that's happening, the delays on time is increasing. So please, just do the infrastructure before it's approved and then approve it. All right? We good?
Okay.
Thank you.
And next?
I have not been sworn in since I was talking to the chicken lady. Hey, I got chickens, you know, we all have chickens.
Where are you in?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the right.
George Kovalu, 23651 Harmony Lane, which is an easement off of 20-mile level road. I was going to talk about water and the effects of basically how much development this commission's allowing and that we're over pumping and stuff, but that's irrelevant. They're addressing traffic and they're talking about the northbound Livingston entryway, but you got 178 townhomes, let's just say 125 of those are two, two parent, or two, a couple. You have two cars there, that's 250 cars. Most of them are probably going to go to work, eight, seven, eight, nine o'clock. Now you have 250 cars that have to get out. They can go one of three ways. If you want to come in, so you have that problem on Livingston, which is a two-lane road, even on their entrance, it's going to be two-lane road. If you're coming home, if you pull up that map, that area, real quick, if you're going, if you're, if you're up on 54, you're coming eastbound, the only way to get into that development is a single lane turn for a left turn. Plus, if you're going to Huntington, you're making a U-turn. I, now, people will give you anecdotal evidence. I worked in Tampa, I traveled this route, and I had to make the U-turn to go to 20-mile level. I used to come up 41, Collier, Willow Van Parkway to Collier, and then 54, make the U-turn. That got too, too much traffic. So I started coming across Livingston, coming up, coming across Sunset, coming up Livingston to hit it so I can make the left turn. I've almost gotten creamed there twice in the last six months. The right turn lane isn't the problem, it's you're going to have to make a left. Now you're going to have more through traffic going to their development, you're still going to have the left turn going towards, if you want to go to Huntington or go westbound, plus you have the turning lane there, where if they're going to go to Huntington, they have to make the U-turn. And then you're going to have people, they're not all going to come up Livingston, they're going to come up 41 to 54, they're going to make a left turn out of that traffic line. You have one lane, you have a short light. I've sat there in the last year, when I was working, I've sat there between five to six changes of the light. I've sat at Livingston for five to six changes. But also, you have another problem downstream on Livingston, if somebody is making a right turn, a left turn, southbound onto County Line Road, you're looking at a light per, per car that wants to make the turn at a lot of times during the day. I know this not adroit totally because I've sat in that traffic, waited two to three lights if two or three cars are going through. Coming south, northbound, you've got the same problem. At Collier, well, it's, it's Collier there, County Line, and Livingston going through, there's just so much traffic, you're going to add another 250 cars to this. They're going to come one of three ways. And that's, you know...
I have to wrap it up, so...
I did. That's pretty much it. You know, we have, we have, there's no traffic control on the, on the main one that they're worried about, which they're not worried about, which would be eastbound on, on 54, trying to make that left-hand turn or U-turn.
Okay, um, we're going to, is there anyone else here who wishes to speak to this? Do we have anyone online today? I think our online is not working today, something's going on there. You know, as we're looking at this map, can you zoom in on this a little bit? This is just for my commissioners because I like to harp on this. Uh, what happened? I just wanted you to zoom in.
Because it's not...
We can't zoom, we can't make that bigger?
No.
All right, this is my little beef. See Park Crescent Drive down there on the bottom left?
Mm-hmm.
And if you, if you look at the map, I'm just looking at it here, Barbara's map. Can you, can you put her map up like this again? And you can see it right there. If we had made it so that those neighbors had to connect, there would have been some connectivity, and if they, if there was a flooding, people could have come in here, over there, and out that way. So they didn't, weren't reliant on one road. That is one of the reasons why it's so important that neighborhoods interconnect. They are showing a future connection to the north and a future connection to the, to the west. So that will help connect, you know, with flow from the communities around it. And that is very, very important in, in my eyes, this connectivity. All right, we'll let the applicant come back up and address the issues that were hurt.
Being that was all traffic, I want to see if Steve's got anything he can add. I know he's also looked at the traffic crash data as well, so...
Again, Steve Henry, Linkson Associates. One, talk about the, the accidents at the intersection. So we, we actually had the county supply the, the last five years of accident data at that intersection. And when we look at it, there have been 130 accidents at the intersection over the last five years. So then what we look at is, is that a lot of accidents or not? And so what we do is we look at the, the number of accidents per million vehicles through the intersection. That's how DOT looks at intersections. So when you look at that, you look at the number of accidents, 130 accidents over five years, that comes out to be about 1.05 accidents per million vehicles through the intersection. When you look at the DOT, and DOT has gone through the entire state, every county, every different type of road, and assessed what the average accident rate is for the different roads. So when you take a six-lane urban arterial roadway for DOT, the average accident rate is 3.77 accidents per million miles traveled. So from this standpoint, this intersection is well below what the average would be for the type of facility for 54. So from that standpoint, there are certainly accidents, the reality is the majority of them are rear end, which is what you expect to see at a signalized intersection, that that's just the reality of signalized intersections. But from a, from a rate standpoint, this is actually not a high accident intersection. From a, a traffic standpoint, the, the 250 cars, that's assuming that everybody leaves their house at the same time. The reality is that's not what happens. Obviously, it's over a period of time. We've looked at that, the reality is, this number of units has about 83 cars leaving or coming and going in the, in the morning and about 103 in the afternoon. So much less than the 250 that they're, they're talking about. And again, we have come up with mitigation for the intersection. You know, are we going to fix it? No, but certainly have come up with some mitigation to help the overall intersection. Thank you.
Um, I, thank you. I have a question for the applicant and the engineer, not the traffic engineer. Gina, can you put up the picture that my staff sent you that has the oak trees around the stormwater pond? You, you've all seen this photo, this is driving up Little Road. It's kind of near the entrance of Riverside Village on the right-hand side of Little Road. So these are stormwater ponds that line Little Road, but look what they did with them. They lined them with oak trees. So, um, I'm just wondering if we can get our applicants and our engineers to do this. Instead of having those bald stormwater ponds, we could put some of our tree canopy back around the edges of the stormwater ponds. Is there any issue with that? Yeah, I don't know why we don't do this or require this personally. Okay, um, it's, yes?
They, I'm not, I think Barbara needs to do her rebuttal and then you can ask your questions.
Okay. Yep. That is fine, we just, we wanted to address traffic, we've talked about drainage, we've talked about traffic. The county used their mitigation, tree mitigation fees and did that years ago when I was at the county. That's how that, that's how that came to look like that.
Yeah, and it's lovely, right?
Yeah, and I don't think, I mean, my team's saying that's not a, an issue.
Yeah, I'd like to see them put some trees around their ponds. Especially the ones along the road.
Anybody else have any other questions for my team?
Was that your rebuttal?
Yeah, that is.
Okay, see?
Look, I've got a comment. So the engineer's construction estimate of the signalization project, signalization says it's $71,000, roadway's $100,000, then there's some other items that get up to over $200,000. Is there anything else we're missing as far as what you guys are doing for improvements?
So, there are four things we're doing. One is we are extending your vision road to your standards.
I'm talking about the intersection right in 54.
Okay, all right, because I just, because it's four things we do for mitigation, but...
We're just talking about this one right now.
You have the estimate, yes, and if you want Steve...
So it's $71,000 for signalization.
Yeah, well, it gets Steve back up here because it's his estimate, so...
Okay.
All right.
Yes.
So on your estimate, it's $71,000 for in signalization, it says roadway $100,000. What is that?
That would be to mill and resurface the road if needed as part of the restriping.
Okay, so it's actually less than what you said. Signalization's only $71,000.
Right.
And who determines if needed?
That would be in the permitting process as to whether or not that would be just simply a restriping exercise or whether it be a milling and resurfacing. But we wanted, obviously wanted to go on the high end of it just in case that it ended up being that we had to do that, so that's why we put that number in there.
All right, so with the signalization, compared to where it is right now, the gentleman was talking about how he sits in turn after turn with the, with the signals, is your signalization going to improve that or how will it improve it?
It will improve it to, again, to a degree, it will improve that northbound approach to the intersection. It, it's not going to fix the other, other movements at the intersection, but it will help that overall, the overall intersection, it will help it with that movement of the intersection.
But the northbound has nothing to do with this neighborhood?
Well, we certainly have some traffic in that northbound. Again, what we were looking at is not necessarily specifically, you know, our traffic, what we're looking at is the overall intersection. And we're looking at what can a project of this magnitude do to the intersection to try to help the situation. We looked at the imbalance between the rights and the throes, and that's where we came up with that to try to help balance it. It would then basically be equal volumes between the, the northbound left, the northbound, then the shared through right and the right. So it kind of balances the volumes at those three, at those three lanes. Again, not fixing the intersection, but simply helping the overall operation, given the imbalance of, of the traffic at the intersection.
You know, we can't ask 178 units to fix a big problem.
Right, that's, again, we, we can't fix a big problem. All we can do is try to come up with a solution that helps, given, you know, the circumstances that we've got out there, the geometry and the volumes that we have out there, to come up with a solution.
Do we feel that we answered the construction traffic? Because this has become a very big problem for a lot of our constituents, how we're, how we're dealing with construction traffic.
Well, here's what, to me, here's what you're going to see.
I just want to make sure we get the wording right.
So in the morning, you've got 80, 80 trips coming out, 103 in the afternoon going back out, coming back in. Think about the gentleman who just said here, with what, going out there at that intersection to try to go out there, sitting through a number of lights, how many more lights? You've got 20 cars, let's say, 40 cars, let's say, in daytime traffic, getting, getting ready to go to school. All those trips are right there, and how are they going to get out? And how long is that backup going to be? Now adding construction traffic to go in there as well.
Well, but again, you, you, you're not going to have construction traffic and our buildout traffic. And, and just to...
Right.
Address your, your, your comment there, in the morning, outbound is 65 cars. So again, the 83 was the total in and out, and in the PM, it's about 42 cars. So again, yes...
65 cars going out there, we heard the gentleman talk about how long it takes him to get out there. Now we've got 65 cars going out there, maybe going to school, maybe going to work, all in there from 7 to 9, Jim, all in there, how much is that going to be? And keep this in mind, too. You know, US 41 and 54, you know, that intersection is, right? We spent how many years trying to get that fixed, trying to get funding, et cetera. Do you know this one is the next worst at Collier? And now you go through all this stuff, you're going to the right?
Again, we're not at Collier, we're, we're at Livingston.
I understand, that's why I said, Collier's up there, but I'm saying that intersection's terrible. Now we're taking, a lot of these people are going to be heading up that way as well to, to compound it even further.
Again, our, our impact on this intersection is extremely minor. We, we are actually less than 1% of the capacity of the roadway. So we, we... So we, we are infinitesimal increase in, in the, the delay at the intersection.
You're missing my point. You're missing my point. The point is not just for what goes on 54. It's all these people that live up there right now that are going to be trying to get out there and now aren't going to be able to get out. And then even when the development's done to try to get out, as you say, it's not going to fix much. Now you're still going to get even more traffic backed up there waiting for these people to get out.
Again, we, we are mitigating our impacts to that intersection with, with our improvements.
Is there?
Where's Nick Uren? Is he here? I know there's intersection improvements coming at Collier and 54 right and 27. What's the timeframe? When's our, we had that last briefing? There's some turn lane improvements.
Good afternoon.
Is my memory wrong?
Commissioners, Nick Uren, county engineer. Collier and 54 turn lane improvements?
What, didn't, didn't we discuss?
We're doing some things, some work down at, at the intersection of Collier and County Line. Is that where, where it intersects with Livingston to the south? Is that what you're thinking of?
Oh.
Potentially, I'm, I know we'd had some briefings on some, on some improvements, but I thought that there were some turn lane improvements coming in at 54 and Collier going northbound.
We, so we've looked at modifying the, the median on Collier to, to make a longer storage area for southbound left turns. I don't know that we've implemented or have a plan to pull the trigger on that one yet. I'll have to get back with you.
Like what we did at 54 and 31?
I thought we had when, when we.
Oh, you weren't here then.
I was on.
Let me, let me follow up. If, if that's what you're thinking of, are we modifying the, the median?
The median?
Yep. Let me follow up on that. I'm, I'm not sure where that sits.
That was happening sooner than later.
I, I thought it was too, but I need to investigate. Yeah, so we are definitely going to try to increase storage capacity and make the operations of the intersection work a little more efficiently, minimize the conflict points. Yeah.
I have a question for Barbara and, um, and sorry if I missed this. The construction traffic, is it possible you can divide it between 20 Mile and Livingston for a time being? I mean, you'd have to make a temporary connection, maybe?
So we were asked to keep construction traffic off of 20 Mile.
But guys, maybe that helps if some, if it's on 20 Mile. I don't. What's your thoughts on that?
I don't think so.
No? It's not fair to the residents.
Right, so that's, we were asked to, to use the signalized intersection.
Divide it up.
So is that, is that extension where the, where the vision road is? Or is that essentially going to be like a mini lay-down yard?
What was that?
Where you're looking at extending Livingston to the north where you're, where the project's going to potentially build part of the vision road. I'm assuming that's going to be part of a lay-down yard, storage place for construction and work, right?
Let me get our engineer up here. I did forget to say receive and file the, the PowerPoint which I gave to the clerk. So if you wouldn't mind while he's walking up here, taking, filing this, yes.
Move.
On favor, bye.
Commissioners Jeremy Couch, I'm the civil engineer for the project. I think there is a slight bit of confusion about what we're doing and I want to really clarify that what we're actually doing. Can you pull up the aerial real quick, please? Okay, and can you zoom in a little bit on 20 Mile level and go south to 54? Thank you. Perfect. One more zoom. Okay, great. Okay. So at the north end of 20 Mile level, there are 20 or 25 residents. To go home and to leave, if they want to go to the outlet mall right now, what they have to do is they come down the dirt road. They have to make a right, which is west. They have to go make a U-turn and then go back east to go to dinner at the outlet mall. And when they come home at night, whichever way they come, whether they come up Livingston or whether they come east down 54, they have to get to Livingston. They have to make a U-turn, go back to 20 Mile level and go north up the dirt road to their home. That's how they get home today. What we're saying is right now Livingston ends. So if you, I'm an expert at this. Right here, Livingston ends right here. The only thing that accesses Livingston right now, this is one of, I think, three access points to Tarabella, not to mention the driveway out here from the Dairy Queen. The only thing that really comes in here is the ALF. It ends. So what we're saying is we're going to build this road in. We're going to stabilize it. And so instead of those 25 people getting dirt trucks running up and down the road and stuff, we're going to come in from Livingston where the only people using Livingston now generally are the ALF and the people at the commercial site. That's what that condition is, is so that they can have their piece and their dirt road and they don't have to deal with construction traffic and hauling and going up and down the dirt road. That's what that is now.
So there's not a lot, so there's not, not a lot of people using Livingston right now.
Nobody's using Livingston. They can't.
Yeah, until their residents come in, so.
Just bums.
Yeah.
So that. What will be better, though, what, what I don't think was said in any of the testimony, is that when we connect, ultimately, we are going to connect Livingston to 20 Mile level up here. Now, when these people want to come home that live on 20 Mile level, they're not going to wait here and make a U-turn and then go up the dirt road. They're just going to go up Livingston and they're going to be straight home. And on the southbound approach, if you're coming from USF or from Tampa, you're not going to have to wait and make a left where the racetrack is. Now you're just going to be able to go straight home, straight through the intersection. And so that, that's the real improvement that we're doing.
Yes.
Is, and so that's what Steve is saying, is that that re-majiggering is going to change and improve the intersection.
Okay.
Thank you.
When, when does, when does that part of Livingston get built?
Up front, we have to. We have to, we have to use it for our access. So, so what it says is we got to show up because we can't get there now. It's woods. We're going to drop the equipment. We're going to clear it and stabilize Livingston. And that will become our construction access. The only thing we're going to be on 20 Mile level for is to connect the utilities to the south. And that's already a utility corridor for the county. Met with them. That's where they want the utilities.
So anybody who's going to live up above there, they're going to be looking on 20 Mile level if they're going to take a right, they don't even have to go to that Livingston light. They just go to the right and go out.
Right. Now, but once, once Livingston ends, they're not going to do that. They're going to go straight up Livingston to 20 Mile level. They're going to be like.
I'm, I'm going to say, I think the long-term effect of this whole thing should be that 20 Mile level road gets paved. Because if you can take all those intersection trips that back up here on Livingston that want to go to the right, if they can have an alternative route going through here, all those turns, now you can free up that intersection a lot better.
So, so this commissioner goes way back to the beginning where we had conversation about closing 20 Mile level and that was a whole debacle. So now what we're doing is we're tying 20 Mile level back into Livingston. Will showed it on his exhibit. So that option remains there. So now these folks have two ways to get out. They can go down 20 Mile level if they don't want to wait at the light or they can go to Livingston if they want to make a left and go to the outlet mall.
Anybody who's going to do through traffic at Livingston and 54, if they're going to go straight through, the best thing is obviously going to the light, going across. If they're going to go take a left, head into the Eldon Mall, Livingston's going to be the way to go. But anybody else in the whole development from above should be coming down this parallel road here. Commissioner Starkey, about interconnectivity. You have this, if you have this other road to the side, everybody's going to be able to take a right turn. If it's paved, it's going to go down that way and take the right turn and get out. And that would free up that intersection a lot better than it's going to get blasted up now.
Commissioner, I don't think there's a lot of southbound volume now on, on Livingston. I don't think there's anything there in the morning. It's just ALF. There are old people. They don't go anywhere.
No, 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 no. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying the ALF's moving because that's one of the things. I mean, you talk about trips, th- those are very minimal trips. I'm talking about everybody that's going to live in this development, that's going to live above it already. When they come down, if they all come down to Livingston, that intersection gets jacked up bad. And all you've got to do, all you're doing right now is striping and, and other improvements. What I'm saying is, let me finish. As I'm saying is 20 Mile road is a good reliever road for anybody who's going to come out on 54 and take the right turn and go out.
The improvements we're doing is on the south side of 54. On the north side, you got, what Steve said, 65 vehicles over a two-hour period. That's one car every two minutes that are coming down to, I believe there's three lanes? Two, there's two lanes at that north, north leg? So you're going to take R65 plus whoever's coming out of the ALF in the morning, plus the 25 homes up north. There's not going to be any traffic there. They're going to, they're going to be able to make this left and they're going to be dancing because they don't have to go make the U-turn.
I'm good with the left.
Sorry.
No, I'm, I'm good with the left. I'm just saying, for everybody taking right, if you, pull up the map for the intersection, please. Or is there anything, is there any changing on the north part here? On Livingston and 54? Is anything changing there at all?
Sheriff Starkey, Sheriff Starkey, if I may. I think, I think what Commissioner Mariano is referring to is just, just making sure the 20 Mile level road connects back into Livingston right here. And I think if we.
It does. He said it does, up at the top.
With the plan that they're, they're showing, they show that just south of the, of the site, they do have that connection.
As a matter of fact, do we even need living, uh, 2 Mile, 20 Mile, whatever, south of that? Does anyone live on that area between, oh, wait, between where 20 Mile and Livingston are going to connect and 54? We don't even need that dirt road. We could. Well, well, yes, if someone wants to go down a dirt road, they can choose to, I guess.
Right, so there, there is no, it's a, that's a commercial property in that stretch.
It leaves them options.
Yeah, it leaves them options.
It was important when we met with the neighbors, it was very important. And they've actually looked at my conditions of approval and commented on them because at one point I didn't have it written right. It is important to those residents that live north of us that 20 Mile level roads stay, so they have options.
Yeah, so.
And so we designed everything and did all of this timing on our construction and everything so we could really make things work.
Mr. Waitman, it's, it's your, it's your district. Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, so I appreciate all the emails and everybody who's reached in and, and, and reached in out about for this project. In the day, future land use in this whole area is R6, residential 6, and they're coming in 3.8, 3.8 units per acre, which is well under that. And the project is compatible and certainly not appropriate for the future. And so with that, I move approval.
Second. And I think that you're improving the drainage by holding the, the storage back. I'm sorry you have to do that when we have a neighbor who's not being cooperative.
Madam Chair, can I get clarification on the motion? Does that include the change to the timing of the condition, the intersection improvement? Is prior to the first building inspection of the first unit? That Barbara offered up previously?
Yes, well, the.
Is that part of your motion?
Well, those have to be done before any COs issued all those.
Right, she, she had offered up during, previously that it was.
That's different than what was in your agenda packages, is David's point. That was modified at this hearing. So would you please restate your offer?
Yeah, the specific language is prior to the final building inspection for the first residential unit. And we do building inspection because you can't do it at CO. So it's the final building inspection for the first residential unit would be the language you could incorporate in your motion.
I just want to make sure the motion included that change.
It does.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Well, I'm, I'm still stating mine under discussion too. So, so it improves the drainage and it, I think it makes it safer for residents. They don't have to do U-turns anymore. Commissioner Mariano.
Yeah, I, these improvements to, these improvements at the south part of the road, what we're seeing on the map here, right? Not the north. Not with this, not with the development. Is that correct?
There's improvements at the ALF.
On the map that's on the screen right now, these improvements that I'm seeing here, are those from?
Striping?
North heading southbound? Is that southbound at 54? All right, so this part of the Livingston that goes up to connect?
That's, yeah, that's.
Okay.
Northbound, south going north.
It's a south, is it a southbound lane?
No, it, it, it's if you're going from County Line Road north to 54.
So it's to the south of this, it's not where this development's going to be. It's to the other side of the road.
Correct, yes, correct, yes.
So I think, I don't, I don't know, I don't know why this is being done so much, but I'll just say this. I think our money would be much better spent having that 20 Mile road getting it paved when more people are going to take that right turn to get out and relieve the traffic that's above there than it is for down here. I think the focus should be to the, to the, to the northern part where the development is, not to this section down here. I don't, I don't, I don't get why we're doing it this way.
It's $71,000, right?
No, it's about 220-something thousand. It's, it's, it's over, it's over 200,000. I, I'm saying that.
Put it on my, on 20 Mile?
On 20 Mile road, because like, as you say, if you have more ways to get in and out, it's better. And if you have all those people that didn't come down to that intersection, that's from where they are, all those things are coming down that one light at Livingston. If they have an alternative way to take the right turn out, it's a much better use of money, I think.
What can we do for two? What can we do for 200-something thousand on 20 Mile road? Just asking. I don't want to charge it more money if the, if the money's better spent. Is the money better spent improving 20 Mile road? I think that's Commissioner Mariano's suggestion.
I, I think if there's any improvement on 20 Mile level road is to the north to be able to.
That's what I mean.
Figure out to get in to, to go up to the top and go, go west somehow.
Oh, to the north?
That way.
I, I, I won't argue with that either. But I mean, but what we're doing right here doesn't make sense to what.
That's why I said it didn't affect, that, those southern things didn't affect the residents to the north.
So I'm, I'm going to say this, as this vote comes up, because of the stormwater, because of the traffic, I'm not happy with what I'm seeing here. We're just going to make a situation worse where I think there's potential to something better.
Well, I, I don't. I don't see why we're making the situation worse because no one's using Livingston. They're not, we're making it better. They're now going to have two options to get out.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, so, okay, so we have a motion and a second. The question is, do we want to amend the motion to say, take the money that was going to be used south and let staff work with the applicant to see if there's a better use of that money to help 20 Mile road? Leave it flexible and then we can get this through? What do you think?
I'm not comfortable saying yes and I.
Well, we have, I think we have three threes, so.
That was.
Three aces. I'm just at, trying to understand. I think Commissioner Mariano had a good idea.
I think, and I think your idea is good to amend the motion and make that happen.
It doesn't, they don't, they would just work together. I don't want to hold them up. They would just work together to see if that money is better spent on a, on improving 20 Mile road somewhere. I don't know where that would be right now, but.
And if it's not, then we're in the same.
Yeah.
I just don't know by what standard you would determine would be optimal.
That's up to staff and the engineers and the applicant. Just giving flexibility to that 271, if that's the number. Or do you want to leave it where you're fixing the striping south of 54?
Well, that's where.
Wait, wait.
That's where the public said that there was a failure. It's that left-hand turn movement.
That's got nothing to do with this project.
So I've conversed with the county engineer. I mean, listen, what the applicant has proposed is, you know, we, we think it's sound. If you want, staff can look at improvements on 20 Mile level and then we can determine if that makes sense from a county perspective. But to, I, I just, I don't think I'd be comfortable with, with really no standard to determine which would be better. The applicant's proposed something that I think works and, and will work in the meantime. We can take board direction to Commissioner Mariano's point here and take a look at 20 Mile level road necessarily. I mean, to not hold them up, but that would just be my thought.
But you're, you're, they're giving the engineers the flexibility to make that decision, not coming back to us. You guys have the flexibility to decide what you want to do. They're not going to do it until the first construction COs issued anyway, so you've got plenty of time to work it out.
And honestly, in the past, we haven't been kept abreast of things before and things have either changed or, and so I, I'm not comfortable with that either.
Well, I have to ask the motion maker if he accepts an amendment. And if he doesn't, then we take the vote. If, if it passes, we'll move on. If it fails, we take another motion.
I'll see.
That's Robert's.
I don't see anybody in this stand saying yea or nay. I, I'd much rather see the investment. They need to answer. At Collier.
Yeah, so barbed wire height for the applicant. We spent four months working on this with DOT. I think your staff just said they, they think the improvement that we proposed is, is a good improvement. They're recommending it. We'd like to stay the course with what we've worked very hard on and, and very thoughtfully on. That's what we'd like to do, but do I want to, you know, do I, do we not want to be flexible? We, we, we can also be flexible. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, we can go either way. If you want to be flexible and have the either or, that's fine. But we, I, we do stand behind, and the staff stand behind, what we, what we brought for you, brought to you today.
I just, I just don't know what, if, if, if the. I just, I just don't know what, if, if, if the flex are gonna be put in there, what would, what would the improvements be?
Yeah, I, I don't know. We, we would have to look at it. I mean, to Barbara's point, you know, it, it's been looked at. But if the board wants us to sit down and scratch our heads again with it, and either we agree that the original course of action was, was right, or if there's some modification that needs to be made jointly, then within the boundaries of what they, they're proposing, then we can, we can do that.
And I, I have a comment because this is frustrating for me. I, it's great that you guys have worked hard, and you guys have worked hard, but we're the ones that get the emails. And, and our name is on it, and I just need to, I, I want to make sure that this project is good quality, that the neighbors can get out. We're not causing more congestion, that what we say is gonna happen, and I'm afraid if this goes back to staff, we're never gonna see it again. And it might just stay status quo. And like Commissioner Mariano had an idea, like if it, if, if it's not worth it, then we might have just approved something that is gonna stay like this.
Okay, am I missing something? Because these residents are not coming down Livingston.
They're coming down 20-mile level road.
20-mile, there is no light. They're, they're going down and they're making a U-turn on 54. So we're gonna allow them to come down Livingston and be at a signalized intersection.
Or go through Flor Medical Plaza and-
Yeah.
That is much better, so-
And my clients, that, my clients, that segment that we're doing on Livingston Avenue, the client's paying for, that's not an inexpensive segment over the road, so-
I'm a yes, may have 3. I was just trying to add in the flexibility, but if you don't want to do it, I can call the, call the vote.
Are you good with the flexibility?
I was.
Alright, I'm, I'm in the motion for the flexibility-
Okay.
Option. And to keep, if it does change the course, in the motion, that staff or whoever appropriate update all five of us, and that's in.
But then does it go to another vote?
Then what's gonna, no, what's gonna determine-
I trust our staff.
We know.
Mr. Chairman, what is gonna determine what they do? Because now you're left with two options. You, you're not sure what you're gonna get, and we're gonna vote that either.
No, it's either restriping.
It's either the intersection improvement as presented.
Which is restriping, right?
Restriping and signal, and signal changes.
We can do that ourselves.
Or- Or paving of, paving of 20-mile level road.
Just on that part, restriping or paving?
To pave a portion, the southern portion of 20-mile level road, or some level of improvement like that.
That would be what we would be discussing with staff to see if that was a good alternative for that money.
And if it's not, they'll go ahead and do the, uh-
And we'll do the intersection that everybody reviewed and still think it's a good improvement.
I mean, it does help other citizens, which at the end of the day is a good thing. Yeah.
So the motion is amended?
Okay. All in favor?
Seconded.
Yeah, and amended motion is seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, passes 3 to 2.
3 to 2.
Alright, we are on to P60. We're under, I mean, R60, we're under Ralph.
Well, we got lift, Ralph and then-
Is that it?
Ralph?
Yeah, Ralph and then R is.
Good afternoon, Ralph Lear, our Government Affairs Officer. So today we are going to finalize our 2026 state legislative priorities. Based on the conversation you all had at the legislative workshop back in September and follow-up meetings I've had with you all individually. We will now review and go through our policy and funding initiatives to move forward for the 2026 legislative session. So for policy initiatives, we're gonna go ahead and go with the Fix the Senate Bill 180. This is a hot topic for the whole state with municipalities and counties. I also see that this will be adopted by FAC at their November Legislative Conference when they will finalize their legislative agenda. The next issue, inmate medical care. What this issue is, is we, we had our local bill, we ran into a snag again this year. We will not be moving forward with a local bill. However, there are other counties that wanted to try to address through a state bill to change the Agency for Healthcare's rule, which prevents currently Medicaid payments for anyone that's incarcerated. Just a little background information, federal regulations allow Medicaid to be covered, but Florida does an exclusion. So we're gonna try to overwrite that and see if we can get that done. They have found a house sponsor, so we'll move forward with that one. Support for community care, all this one is saying is, let's continue having the legislature fund those issues. It, it does help our residents here in Pasco County, so we ask for the continued support there. Public records exemptions for misdemeanor probation staff.
Ralph, can I say something on that one? Do we have, is it possible that we can, you know, you know how it is when people get arrested but not, they're not charged with anything?
They're not adjudicated, yeah.
That adjudicated, that we have to pay for their medical. Will this fix that too, or is that still a federal?
That's still a federal.
That is ridiculous. We have to fix that.
This is for Medicaid. This isn't for Medicare. This is our state healthcare that we provide. So this is what we're trying to amend and say, yes, we continue on. There are some states that opt out. You know, again, federal law allows us to continue. Our state opts out. We're gonna try to see if we can get them back in.
Yeah.
The next one, public records exemptions for misdemeanor probation staff. Don't, uh, we know the, why there's a need for that, where our, those staff do get threats. We'll see how that plays out. It has to have a sponsor. We haven't got a sponsor yet, but we'll see. It's also another state issue. There's other counties that are trying to do the same thing, so hopefully we'll get that done.
Okay, I need to go back. Where is the code enforcement?
It's coming up.
Oh, okay, good.
Uh, next one is a regional issue. This is one that Pinellas submitted before. This will be another FAC issue, support raising the 911 fee that currently is collected. It's 40 cents per line and is no longer able to support the level of expenses in maintaining the 911 system throughout the state. So we're trying to get that raised again. Uh, next one is another regional and state concern around the state, support indexing for local option fuel tax. And I see this as a fairness state table to do that. We're trying to get that as well too on our local option tax to bring those fees up so we can afford the cost of construction. And then finally, support amending the law for pertaining to code, municipal code. This too will be also addressed by FAC at their November, and I'm sure it's gonna pass as well.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Let's go back to that one about indexing the gas tax.
Yes.
So we did, we did the meeting with our legislative delegation, and Representative Steele made it very clear, we're not gonna do anything that's gonna increase any taxes on our citizens. So I think when you put that in there, you lose him, you might lose the others right away. I don't think it makes sense to throw that in there with all the other things they're trying to do right now.
Okay, one we'll take in. We'll take that one off. If you want, but I mean, what do you all want to do on that, everybody else? Your thoughts on that? So did you, so the comments back at the, the comments back from the legislators that attended were, they don't see the state raising taxes at the state level. What this would require is them to raise that tax, the local op-
No, it just, it just starts-
It shifts the burden to your citizens.
It does, right. What was that?
Yeah.
Shifts the burdens to the Pasco County taxpayers.
Yeah.
911 fees, not indexing fuel taxes, still come out of your general fund-
Yeah.
-to cover those costs.
This is smart.
And these are users that can be out of state, especially on 911.
Correct.
Everybody drives the roads.
Uh, what, what I'm saying is-
But I understand your-
And I agree with it, but what I'm saying is, you heard a state representative who's looking at different things to cut property taxes. There's eight other proposals, or 10 other proposals on cutting property taxes. They want to cut taxes. To try to throw this in there when he told us very clearly he's not supporting anything that's gonna throw the burden on, I think it just hurts your argument.
But when they cut the, the property tax, they're gonna raise the sales tax, so they're gonna be raising-
Whatever they do, let them go figure that out. What I'm, what I'm just saying is-
Not the task gonna go through.
This was in front of him, and he said very clearly, he's not gonna do it. So I gotta think the others are gonna be going along the same way. I think you're just like, making it harder to get the other things you're gonna try to get later. That's all. I hear you.
What about, did this go through in Pinellas or no?
Uh, yes. It'll be part of their priority, yes.
This is part of the fact.
I mean, I say, in, in my opinion, I'd say it's worth a try. I think we should work-
Doesn't mean they're necessarily gonna file a bill and do that. It just says we support doing that, yeah.
If we're not covering our fees.
And again, the argument, as, as Mr. Cabala just stated, currently, it's, it's your constituency, their constituents, your constituents now have to foot that bill. And again, fairness, the state has the indexing. We do not have-
And let me say, if they, if we don't have this, and they get rid of product taxes, we're really, I mean, we're just further in the hole.
And especially if Pinellas is doing it, I think, you know, we should try.
The whole state's trying to get this done.
It's, it's okay. I just wanted to bring it out because it was-
I, I-
It's a good point, thank you.
I, I, I'm, I'm supportive of your argument.
Sometimes you have outliers. Just saying.
So that'll be our policy initiatives, and then moving forward with our, our funding initiatives.
Can I, I want to ask my board something. I want to bring up to you third-party inspections on policy initiatives. There is a lot of chatter online again about, and I, I heard the attorney general is investigating a builder, and it's a local builder, and maybe it's more than one, I don't know. But I know that in my district and in Bexley and, and some others, there was a builder who built houses, and they immediately got mauled. And as a matter of fact, we have a head of planning whose house got mauled. And we could not interfere, intervene, we could do nothing because they used a third-party inspector. And so, but you know what? We're getting the blame for it. Online, county commission is getting the blame for it. And we had not, we can't do anything. So I think that there needs to be some work done on third-party inspectors.
Which is one of the issues that is on the FAC agenda, and I think they approved that at the meeting, so it will be adopted.
I had to leave before they went through.
Yeah, it will, yeah.
I, I don't know if you guys know that, and I don't know-
There was that discussion.
Yeah, David Allen, if you want to explain the rule on third-party inspections.
Well, the problem is that they actually enhanced the ability to use third-party inspectors in the last legislative session. They went the other way.
Yeah. They said you could use them. Yeah.
And, and Chair Starkey and board members, the challenge with the, the private party inspections is that any disputes are referred to the state for resolution, and that's, that's the, the big challenge that we have.
I don't disagree with you. I'm just saying that the-
Yeah.
That where the legislature went last year was to give them more things that they could do.
Well, we're the ones getting the blame online, so letting you know that. Okay.
Okay, moving on to funding, we'll have one county-wide issue moving forward with the decon truck, for new decontamination program truck for fire rescue, $600,000. We have two projects that will be for the East Pasco side, the East Pasco Emergency Shelter and Community Center. Requested for $20 million. It's a $40 million project. We have a match of $20 million for that. And then the next project is the Robert D. Sumner Judicial Center enhancements. Requested amount is-
Can I ask you a question, Ralph?
Yes, ma'am.
On that East Pasco Emergency Shelter and Community Center?
Yes.
Is this not something we're looking at getting some funds in another place? And that, from?
Quite possibly, yes. This is for the design, though. This is not-
But we can't, I don't think we can ask in another place if we're asking, is that true? If we're asking here, can we ask in another place?
And I'm assuming you're referring to if we were to pull it from the federal dollars of the CDBGDR.
Yeah.
That might be a problem, but again, it's design, it's not on the construction that we're, we're seeking this time around.
I just want to make sure we're not shooting ourselves in the foot. That's, that's all.
We got open funding we can look at next year too, maybe?
But not, not, those don't-
Not for the shelter.
Yeah.
Oh.
I just want to be sure we're not-
If it don't pass this year, we won't get, I'm not-
I'm just, you know what I mean?
I get you.
So we have to look at that.
Madam Chair. We will look into that.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's not approved, you're not supplanting it. I mean, you can try different sources all the time.
Right, if we don't get the money, that is correct. We can move forward with it.
We're not wrong with asking for it.
Can it be on both lists at one time?
Until it's actually budgeted for, you don't have a supplanting issue.
Yes.
And don't like these in that work, but-
I just, I know this is important to Commissioner Oakley, and so I just want to help support it.
It's, it's important to the east side of the county.
Yeah.
It's, it's really important, you know, county, east side of the county, but county-wide and also in the regional matter of the possibility of using it to help some folks in Pinellas and Hillsborough County. When we have a terrible storm, they had to move out on the way out.
No, I understand all that. I just don't want to jeopardize all the funding sources that you have available.
The problem is, I don't think you'll get two or, two and three together. You're not gonna get both of them.
So as we move forward, we will look into that, just to address that. Uh, the next one, as I said, Robert D. Sumner Judicial Center enhancements, we're asking $12.5 million. Overall cost is $25 million. We do have a match of $12.5 million on that one.
Um, so we do have a match on the East Pasco Emergency Shelter? Yeah.
On the shelter?
Yes.
On the shelter, um-
You said we have a-
We have a match of $20 million. That's already worked into-
WRC.
Yeah.
REC. Under Keith Wiley.
Correct, parks. Uh, so Central Pasco Projects, Ranger Boulevard Extension. We're going in for design. Requested amount we're asking for is $4.5 million. Total overall project cost is $129 million. Design cost is $11.8 million. We have a match of $7.3 million, so actually more, that we're providing for that one. Next one is Shady Hills Road Sidewalk Project. We originally asked for the full amount of 3.5, but we were able to get a match of $1.5 million from Penny, so we're asking for $2 million for that one.
Chair? Yeah?
Uh, Ralph?
Yes, sir.
Please coordinate with, and go back forth with Megan Harding and the school boards wanting to partner up on, seemingly, I mean, get an update from Megan, but help support number five. I don't know in what, what capacity, but they're, they're excited about this.
I think once we have it finalized and we move forward and I can go to print, I will get with the school board and make sure they are aware. It is one of our priorities, and we have sponsors. And have them, when they're up in Tallahassee, support it, you know, push for the support.
Yeah, or preliminarily, they're, they're seeming to-
They will, yeah. Same way with PEDC is also in support of the shelter project, just so you're aware. Moving on to the west side, we have Seepine Septic to Sewer. We're, it's a $9 million project. We're requesting $5 million, so we're able to, we have a $4 million match in there on the construction. And our only water project that we have, so we'll have two transportation silo projects, the two in the central. This would be a water project. Then we have general government projects with the other three projects I discussed. And that concludes your legislative agenda. If you're good with that, I will, you know, go back in and check on that CDBGDR issue as we move forward. But again, it's contingent upon if we get the funds, as you brought up, Commissioner.
Okay.
Doesn't need a vote on this.
Other questions about this, Gus?
So I'll just move forward with our, to go to print. It will be ready for the delegation meeting on November 10th. Since we already had the workshop, that could just be short and sweet. If I have it printed up, I will make sure that's distributed at the delegation, delegation meeting on the, on the 10th. And now, if, while I have the floor, I did want to talk about calendar issues and when we go up to lobby our issues so we can start planning for travel. Just, this will be really quick. So session starts Tuesday, January 13th. That's the second week of session. That following week, normally what we do, FAC meets that following week on Wednesday, January 21st. Commissioner Mariano, Commissioner Starkey, I'm assuming you will go up there for that. We've normally piggybacked off that. Recommendation from our, our lobby team was we don't do that while we're competing with all those people. So we won't go up there at this point in time. That does not stop you all going, but we'll probably refrain from, you could do pop-ins, but we won't- We'll probably refrain from, you could do pop-ins, but we won't set up actual meetings to discuss our priorities until a later date. That third week is Florida League of Cities. They go longer than one day. They're there from Monday through Wednesday. They finalize on Wednesday, January 28th. That's now also the day of Tampa Bay Day. So we can go up and participate in the reception. That'll also be Hillsborough Day, where they have the sandwiches down in the courtyard. But again, not recommending that one. I recommend that we then go up the next week, February, first week of February. You have a board meeting on February 3rd. That will also be the day of the Greater Pasco Chamber, Pasco Day in Tallahassee. They've expanded the participants in that to the school board, to PHSC President's Committee, and one other group, so they will be up there for the day and then doing the reception like they did last year.
What are you suggesting?
So that's Tuesday, February 3rd, but that's also a board meeting. But what I'm going to suggest then is we then go up Wednesday.
Board meeting on my calendar.
Wednesday, February 4th, would we be able to do some meetings in the afternoon? And then all day Thursday, so stay two nights, Wednesday, Thursday night, because we don't want to cram them all in. This is when we'll get not only your delegation, the appropriations chairs, the speaker's office, the president's office. So they said to be more flexible if we could give them a full day, so give them the full day of February 5th if possible. So that's what I'm going to recommend. Wednesday, February 4th, drive up. Some meetings in the afternoon.
What about you guys?
No, 4th, 4th, 4th. You got a board meeting on 3rd. That's why I'm telling you.
On my calendar, I don't.
Well, you do have a board meeting on the 3rd.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So, when I think about, we talked last year with Tempe Day that was up there, three counties who've got working, working relationships going with them. We've got one county that's putting up for the gas tax as well. I'm just wondering, we're not better aligned with the regional group and trying to set up some regional meetings, too?
I, can I expand on that?
Go ahead.
So, when I talk to people about trying to get, like, things approved and in front of their, I say do everything while you're here, because when you're in Tallahassee, they meet with so many people. It's 15 minutes back-to-back, and it's like speed dating.
Sure.
So they don't remember really anything you say. When they're, when you're here and you have a captive audience, they write everything down, and in Tallahassee, it's just, everything's a blur to them. It runs, you know, they're 13, 14-hour days those days.
And again, why I'm recommending this, by then they'll have the, the budget kind of hammered out. They're looking at the, going into conference, February 27th, 28th, that weekend, so they can finalize it. So I think we'll get them at the right opportune time where it's just us, and there's, I mean, there'll be other people up there, but not like we're competing against other counties, League of City, or the regional issue. That's, again, recommendations from our lobby team as well.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
So, and I agree with Commissioner Jaeger about the, when you're up there with that thing, it's speed dating, et cetera. And it's not something we're expecting them to remember. All our groundwork has got to be done ahead of time, and I think we've done some of that already. By having this thing already, getting it set up ahead of time, I think is good. That's the key. I think just going up there, frankly, if every other legislator's got someone knocking on the door and they got signs out front, they're posting social media here, there, we're giving them good exposure, I think. That shows they're meeting with their people, and I think we're helping them in that regard. Do I think it helps with any particular issue? Absolutely not. But I think it's, it's good to go up there when others are there while everyone else is posting away, so.
I think, but to Ralph's point, I think it's quality, not quantity. Like, we'd have more quality time in February, the beginning of February.
Yes, I, I'm for the beginning of February.
Of February, yeah. And, and again.
I can't go, I, I'm out of town the week before, the February, the Tampa Day, Tampa Bay.
Yeah, I get it. Okay, so that, which is the last week of January. So those who want to come up, it's not, you know, and participate, we have not discussed. I'm assuming that they'll want us to try to help out with that and, and offer like we did last year, the Sports Coast Beer and the, the Kumquat Pie. So I have to get with our tourism to see if we're able to do that again this year to help with the reception. But, I mean, again, that's up to you all. If you all want to participate and go forward. They really didn't have that discussion the other day at the Tri-County. They just said, and the date is.
And I'm sure one of the lobby firms will host us in.
Sure. Exactly, exactly. So, so again, I think we're gonna get more, hate to say this, bang for our buck if we go up on this awful geek in February, where there's not a lot of other, other local governments up there competing, and we can get a little bit longer time.
Yep.
So I will circle back then tomorrow with your staff, make sure we have that on the calendar, and we try to get two-day, like, reserved rooms for two nights.
But I, I want to talk about Washington.
Okay.
And I want us to be sure that we are also going to Washington. And we need, you know, to talk about a list of things that we want to do there. But listen, that's where big, big money is, and we need, we need to visit with some, I think, transportation, maybe Army Corps. I, I just think we have to make the rounds up there, too. HUD potentially. Have we been successful in trying to be able to use some money for EOC? And that's to the county administrator, you know, where are we with that? We want to talk about the inmate, and Commissioner Yu, I don't know if you know this, been working on this with NACO for a number of years. If you get arrested and you go to our jail.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, we pay all the bills. I mean, we had Marco ready to work on that, but now he's not in that role. So we need to visit Ashley and help her to, you know.
And I hear your point on that one. So, so again, I think as we're growing, we are finding more issues that we are dealing with when you, though, compare us to like a Pinellas, a Hillsborough, they have military bases. They're going up there a lot with the Pentagon, with military. We don't have those types of issues that they're dealing with. They have really big DOT projects that they've already been approved and are working on. One of our things where we were active was with Army Corps of Engineers, as you well remember, with Ridge Road. But we are growing, and we are seeing that. We did have that opportunity when we were in Washington on NACO to bring up, going back to the point of, do we have other funding sources for the shelter? We are currently working on if they can get a budget passed, but they are still in, in a, a holding pattern up in Washington to go back in and change the universal notice on the funding we got, which would allow us to use some of those dollars for the shelter.
Shelter or the EOC Center?
Shelter.
Shelter, okay.
Because currently, they don't allow you to use it for the shelter.
EOC.
EOC is a different story.
Yeah. So we're working on trying to get that language adjusted on there. But we can work that out again as we, we prepare for, for NACO and maybe work around that week.
So when is Nate, when are we in Wash, you know, when we're in Washington, it's not necessarily maybe the best time.
February 21.
February 21, yeah, the end of February.
Okay. I just.
February 21, 24 is NACO.
All right.
Legislature.
Yeah, I didn't print that one out, so yeah, you're right.
Okay, I gotta look. All right, so I just want to plant that seed in that discussion.
Appreciate that. All right?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to Commissioner, Commissioner Oakley.
Okay. Had a couple of meetings this month. First picture up would be the, we've had a tour of the new jail. Ms. Jaeger and her group came along with myself and Alex and others that would lead us through and make sure we didn't get locked in or locked out, so. But quite amazing tour. I wouldn't want to live there very long, so, at all. But, but it's a well-done jail, I think, from, I haven't toured a lot of jails, so. Even in my younger days, I didn't tour any, so thank goodness. But it's very well-done, and I think the county and the citizens of Pasco County, of course, brought this about and their vote when we did these referendums back, I don't know, it's four, five years ago now, I guess, could be longer.
2018.
But the citizens approved this, and we didn't get the biggest bang for a buck because inflation started about the time we were voting on the amount of money we were gonna set the bond for. And it only allowed us a little over 600, 600 bids rather than 1,000, which we were aiming for when we first started the project. So, but after that, then we had, last Friday, we had the Tri, Tri-County meeting, and so y'all left me all alone.
I was on the phone. Yeah, but I'm so glad at least we had one there.
So I had to tell them about my district, which is half the county, and let them know that since y'all trusted me so well, that I was able to take care of y'all's half of the county at all, so, on that day. And they trust me, the administrator trusts me just enough. He made sure that our county attorney, Justice Anderson, was sitting right next to me, so I wouldn't make any bad moves. But, but it was a good meeting. I did talk, Mike, with Mr. Eggers from Pinellas County a little bit. He would like to see, and I think I would too, a little more meeting the material that we're gonna go over and talk to, about, to be more meaningful for the counties and, and start, you know, getting into working things, you know, in a tri-county issue like that, so. I thought that was good. I think we had the same thing, because some, not that it was humdrum, but it was just kind of normal things. It was quiet and not much to talk to, but there's a lot of projects that happen, whether they happen in our county or ours and another county. Anything that helps transportation going through these, the three counties, Pinellas, Hillsborough, and Pasco, anything that can happen will help all of us, because we all travel these three counties quite a bit, so. Anything in transportation, I know y'all had to agree, too, that anything like 301 getting, well, I made that as an example the other day, is only a small portion of widening four lanes of 301 going into Hillsborough County is not as much help to us, but the total help would be great, because it goes all the way in Hillsborough. Most of the money would be spent in Hillsborough County on that, on that project. That's okay. It helps us all, so. That's the type of project we need to work together on. Yeah. And that's all I have.
Did any of the projects come up from, and I see City of Tampa was not invited? I, I really think we should, you know, especially when we're in Hillsborough County, invite maybe the mayor and the president of their council.
Well, there was some discussion regarding that, so I'll be having that conversation with the other two.
So did any of the, the, you know, the federal grant that the region got for transportation stuff, was any of that discussed? I didn't hear it when I was listening. No. See, we gotta discuss stuff like that.
Well, that's what I mean. I mean, we didn't discuss some things like that, but it just happened the last, three chairman of Tempe Water spoke at the last of it. We got into how we would work together and help each other, so.
And was the, I was on the FAC Executive Council call for the first part of your meeting, because otherwise I was in on a phone there by Commissioner Eggers. Did you meet the new CEO of the airport?
Yes. He spoke to us when.
I have not met that person yet, yeah. I mean, it would be great to hear.
Well-spoken.
That, you know, what's happening at the airport, what's happening at the port, what's happening at some of our big assets, I mean, regional.
Yeah.
Regional issues. How's the dredging of Anclot River going? That would be of interest to all of us with, and to quit messing up our scallops, so when's that gonna be over, right, Jack? Okay, so, I mean, we need to listen to what big projects are happening in other counties and what big projects we have going on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then just a, a little update on Tempe Water. We discussed the possibility of drought coming on, because we haven't had any rainfall lately. When we did get it back, of course, the storms and all helped fill the reservoirs and all that. And then this, in the spring, the rain we got did help us fill the reservoir, and we were already approved for 90% of taking the higher flows and above minimum. We were able to take that 90%, and that helped fill it up during that time.
Yeah.
And now, of course, there's a lawsuit out against, from Polk County against Tempe Water for, they don't want us to take 90% out, but we're all downstream, so it doesn't, it's hard to figure out what they would be taking because they're at a very minimum rate, because they're at the headwater instead of downstream.
I thought we were.
No, 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 no. We're, we're at the end. We're not, not the headwater. It comes from Polk County. Yeah. So, but we had our permit for 90%, and that's helped us quite a bit, so it'll help us in the future, so. But other than that, we did, we did say, well, we're gonna come out with a cautional for sprinkling water yards, things of that nature. But we want to handle that with kid gloves, because most time when you come out and said, oh, we need not to water or cut it from two times a week to one time, people think we're out of water totally, and, and there's no issue like that whatsoever. So we want to make sure that we don't confuse people of being out of water and, and being conservative of the water we have, so.
I always have it on once a week, and unfortunately, my husband turned it off for what was to be the rainy season, and now I've lost my grass yet again in front of my house.
I lost my grass, too. I'm so sad.
Yeah.
My garden is all of it.
Yeah, it's just like the fifth time I've redone it. I, I want to do fake grass, but my neighborhood would let me, but I don't think they'll let me. I did it on my boathouse, and I absolutely love it. All right, Commissioner Waitman?
Yes. Thank you, JJ and your team for hosting. Commissioner Mariano and I. I was one of those guys that moseyed into a freezer or refrigerator and it, it locked.
Oh, no!
And it got cold pretty, pretty quickly.
Wow.
And sometimes those key cards didn't, didn't work on our, on our, on our tour. So don't be too curious in a, in a jail, but, no, thank you all for, for hosting us. And so for committee reports, we had David Allen filled in for Mike. EDC kicked off, and they have a new structure this year for their budget. Don't know if you want to talk about it or anybody, but, so they, they have enough, enough money. They'll operate 12 months, but within, then we'll have to renegotiate next budget cycle on EDC's budget. And it's switching over to, you know, KPI indicators and
That's a good thing.
More of a, what do you say, Mike? Almost annual.
Yeah, more of a performance-based.
Performance-based model for, for funding. I mean, the vast majority percentage of their funding comes from the public side. So until that changes, I, I think that.
You mean from us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
From the public, from the public pocketbook. So we're gonna change some structures a bit, I think, for the better, but if, Mike, you want to touch on, on kind of where we, where we landed. Bill was complimentary over it, and the board, other board members had some pretty good questions, mainly about the lending program and that sort of thing, but everybody seemed to be good with it.
Yeah, high level, and I've had this conversation with you individually in your briefings, is that, you know, actually, this consent agenda, you, you approved a quarterly flat budget with, with a modest increase for salaries at 3.5%, just kind of similar to what the board did for, for us. And in the meantime, our team is negotiating with the EDC on key performance indicators and what types of things we think that they should be doing in order to advance, right? So we're turning the page to the next chapter of what Economic Development Council will be doing for us here in Pasco County, going beyond an MOU to more of a contract, similar to how we handle all of our vendors. And so Mr. Cronin has embraced that, the team's embraced it, and we hope to have something by the end of this year back to the board to level-set and reset how we're doing economic development in the county. We're excited.
Yeah. So is there anything, thoughts as we move forward? I, you know, please share your, with Bill or Mike, and there's other measurables that, that you all think we need to be looking at, as far as jobs or industry. Now's the time to do that for, to prepare for the next year, so. It's a pretty good meeting overall, wouldn't you say, David Allen?
Yeah.
All right.
Where are you meeting these days?
Uh, well, it varies.
Oh.
So sometimes over by the.
A lot of them are at North Point in the area.
By the veterans, at the hotel there, is pretty much where we're meeting most of the time, the hill.
All right. Are you done?
Mike gets there in about two minutes. It's the only meeting I can leave my house two minutes before it starts.
Yeah. All done.
Commissioner Jaeger.
All right. I'll be super quick. So this was Mateo. He was a student in Land O' Lakes, and he shadowed me for the day. So it was kind of cool. He loved talking to Joanna all about government. He was in the meetings. He asked lots of great questions, and he went to the MPO. questions, and he went to the MPO, he had a meeting at the school board, which he took part in, so it was a great experience for him. He will be doing something in government one day. So, okay, that's more of, that's more of Mateo.
Jonah's someone you can mentor.
This was the United Way, and just celebrating everything that they do in our community, and also their partnership with Pasco County, they're providing infrastructures for the trailers that hopefully we will be giving them. Okay, and I won't go into detail, because everyone talked about the jail, but I did bring my son Josh with me, so I made my one phone call, Brad did not answer.
Oh, kidding. That's funny.
All right, go ahead, next slide. So this was before the board meeting in Dade City, and this was One Stop Shop. So basically, they have everything that somebody can come in, whether they've been a battered woman, they're homeless, a veteran, a teen, they have everything there. So I know they were lacking in resources over there, so I asked her if she would come and do a pickup on the west side, and I think she thought I was joking, I said, you're gonna need a truck or a trailer or rent a U-Haul. So she calls me, and she's like, I'm almost there, my truck broke down, and I was like, oh, well, then don't come, just come another day. She's like, no, I'm almost here, and then when she saw everything we had for her, she goes, I thought you were kidding. She said, so, she goes, I have to come back next Wednesday, so tomorrow, and she's renting a U-Haul, but they had this grandmother who literally had nothing in her house, and we're providing a kitchen table, stuff for her kitchen, a full living room set, a headboard, things for her bathroom, I mean, basically a whole house setup, we're, we're giving this lady on Wednesday, and, and we gave her clothes, and she was just so thankful. They even have an outdoor garden, and I had a massive box of seeds, so, and little watering cans, so the kids, when they come to their event, they'll have little watering cans and seeds, but I told this lady, I was like, you can come every couple of weeks for a pickup, so she was, she was very thankful, so. Okay, all right, are we, where are we? Okay, and this was just the clerk's empowerment room, and if you haven't been, Commissioner Sarki and I went, it was very beautiful, very moving. Out of our storage unit, I have some kids' items that we're gonna be donating to the empowerment room, so I'm super excited about that. Okay, next slide. So this was my, my veteran Bob, I don't know if you remembered him from the storm, he was the one where an hour later he, he would have died. Well, he ended up having a stroke, and anyway, so I went to the hospital, he didn't remember any of his information, so thank goodness he was able to, he's able to talk a little bit, but I told him, I said, you're so hairy, you haven't had a haircut in a year, and he would not let me give him a haircut, so I joked, I said, since you can't really talk a whole lot, and you're in the hospital, you're gonna get a haircut. So Ms. Pam came over and trimmed his beard and gave him a haircut, and he was so happy to get a haircut.
He looked so much better.
So much better. So we also cleaned his trailer out at Pasco Hope, so very thankful for Catholic Charities, for hosting Bob for so long, they were amazing. One of the employees I wanna bring back to recognize him, because he just went above and beyond, so, next slide. And then I promise I'm done. Oh, the one of the cat, up, yeah, okay. So I, my hurricane people, I'm showing you this cute picture, just because there's a story behind it, so you guys know all my little, my, my people from the hurricane that I follow. Well, this young lady, I, she truly has nobody, she doesn't have neighbors, she, she has nobody, so I was trying to help her get a job a couple of weeks ago, and she had a setback, and she was in the hospital. To make a long story short, Thursday night, I got a text message that basically she wanted to commit suicide, so she reached out to me, and I reached out to the Bay Care team, and basically I said to her, hey, if I have somebody at your door to, to come help you, will you go? And she said, I won't leave my cats. So I said, I will take care of your cats, how can I get in? So she told me she would leave a sliding glass door open, and anyway, those are the pictures of, of the cats that we took care of, but the, the bigger, the bigger thing for this is the, the takeaway, is that whether it's mental health or a storm, people are concerned about their animals, and here, this lady wouldn't have went unless someone would have taken care of her animals, so, you know, and, and I was, I was honored to do it, right? She got the help she needed, I'm working with Kathy and her team right now, we went in there, and I don't know if you guys remember, but I had a deathly allergic reaction to mold. Well, she had mold in there, so like, my throat started closing, I had to get out of there, but we're gonna relocate this young lady to Pasco Hope, where she will get wraparound services, case management, and get out of the mold. So it's, it's, and Bay Care is at her house now, doing a counseling appointment, so just, you know, keeping in touch, checking on your friends and neighbors, just really important, that's the takeaway for that, so, and that's all I have.
Excellent.
All right, Gene, you got a couple of pictures? Start with the video one first. I'm gonna start on a higher note.
Sorry, I just, you know.
No, it's all good. I, I, we'll go with that. Uh, sorry, we'll go with that. So we had a great convention down in Tampa, it's the Indian community had a group together, people from around the country, around the world, all talking about different things. I was actually one of the opening remarks speaker, and very impressive, everything that was going on there, they're trying to build business, trying to bring business, keep going the next couple of pages, there's more stuff on there, next page. And then this is a family from Oklahoma trying to locate to Tampa area, and I'm trying to make them consider Pasco County, but really good AI stuff they're doing, it was, was incredible. Go ahead, next picture.
Wait, did you say AI or Indian?
AI, but they're Indian.
It was an Indian.
It's an Indian group that put it on.
Okay.
It's all, all business people trying to bring people in from around, around the, around the world. Is there a video?
Doesn't appear to have been attached.
What's that? Didn't attach, sorry.
I won't tell you what Alan.
Okay, so a couple of things, you know, the, the jail was very impressive, great to see it's coming forward, and thinking about, you know, I know there's different things, but how, how can we make things better, how can we improve? And one of the things I was thinking about after watching all the news about ICE agents, et cetera, and the improvements we're gonna make in the jail to make it fully accessible, use the whole thing. So I talked to Stacy Jenkins this morning, I had her send some information over, and pull the email up so I can read it to you directly. So Pasco County has twenty-seven illegal aliens detained. One has had their case resolved and will be transported to a federal facility within the next twenty-four hours. There are twenty-five ICE holds, two border patrol holds, and I asked her for more questions, which we could get for me for this morning. I have staff researching whether we have any prior criminal convictions, if the convictions were misdemeanor felony, and the current days in custody on state charges. I'll forward the information as soon as compiled, so I expect to have it ready for the next meeting. But I think that if we have illegals that are here, that have committed crimes, and we should try to hand them over to ICE now, if they're gonna do some deportation, why do our taxpayers wanna fund these people in there, especially, we're paying one point eight million dollars to Hernando to house people out of county? I think if we can find a way to get these illegals out, if they're gonna be deported, let's move as quick. I did talk to Chase Daniels about it, he goes, anytime we can get a convicted person out of here, back to their country, if that's where they're gonna go anyway, the sooner they go, the better, get them out of our community. So if the board doesn't mind, I'll have a presentation or some more information for the next meeting about what we can possibly do to coordinate these things to happen now rather than us paying the bill. On the red light camera gentleman, I, he, this gentleman called me up and was talking to me, he's talking about different things, he's one of those guys that's a really good guy, affected by the hurricanes, so I got to talk to him a few different times, he told me about the red light cameras, and he told me some things that, he's printed out here, and I just wanna review them with you that bother me, because I never liked these cameras, I fought them when I was on the MPOAC, they delayed for seven years, but finally they made their way back. I think it was about five years ago, we had a conversation with the city, and they talked about, well, because we're in contract, we can't end our contract, and we gotta keep the red light cameras, we're gonna look at getting rid of them. That never happened. So now, as, if, and this is, is confirmed by James Myers, as far as they are out of compliance.
Yeah, what did he mean by that?
The picture, the, the signage, et cetera, is not where it's supposed to be, they've been told it's supposed to be on there, they haven't fixed it yet, so they're, they're in violation, they cannot legally, from what's told, actually issue any tickets, and they're still issuing tickets, because I don't think anything's stopped, I'll say that, I, I'm assuming they haven't done anything to, to stop anything down. So our citizens are getting taxed or fined for cameras that are actually not operating to the required standards as they continue to operate, and I think we, we should take a stance, because it's not just the city people getting these tickets, it's people in the county in mind, in and around, so I think we should be doing something from, from the county to say, we don't want you to issue any more tickets until you've got this squared away.
Why don't we bring this up at the MPO to?
I can, but I don't, I don't even wait another day, because, you know, all these people are getting tickets right now, once someone pays a ticket right away, it lessens the chance of getting it back, but either way, they don't have a valid permit right now to do these tickets, I think we should, should, should send them a letter to stop until they get their resolved, permission, whatever.
Another thing, if, let's say I'm driving your car, and I go through the light, you get the ticket.
Right.
So there's no, there's, you can't even dispute.
Works in my family, my husband gets off.
You can't dispute the ticket, because they don't show the person, they only show the license plate, so I'm super glad my Jeep is.
So I think if, if I, if I, if I could, Jeff, tell me how you feel about this, but I'd like you to be able to send something to them about the board does not want you to issue things until you have a valid permit back on these red light cameras.
You don't have any authority to do that?
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not looking for authority, I'm just saying, as.
Well, but if you're gonna have the county attorney send something that says you're out of compliance, that I have to have something that says, I mean.
You can suggest it, but you can't demand them.
No, I mean, you can't demand anything, but I'm just saying, I don't think you can.
Why don't we try and bring it up with Matt at the MPO?
It's another month away, and meanwhile, you had thirty days more worth of tickets are going out there with signs that are not done properly, so much so that the DOT has not validated them to get into the permit. I mean, they're not doing it the way they should be doing it, and we should take a stand for our people, I think, to say, you're not doing it right, stop until you actually get it right.
If it's DOT that is, that has the authority over the program, I would suggest that maybe board members wanna call the secretary individually and say they're not happy with the program, and let DOT shut them down.
I did, so I did talk to Justin, I, I don't know what, what he, I mean, how does he enforce something that shouldn't be done? Maybe I need to go to the state agency. The state program, the state, DOT doesn't have authority, in a sense of, I would think, to enforce a law, who would enforce?
They would have a right-of-way use permit, or they're, they're probably exist in, in their right-of-way.
I mean, that's what he's, he's saying, that they're not in compliance with their DOT permit.
Okay, so how do we get them to stop?
So that would be the, that would be.
The secretary.
The secretary. I would, I would think that's, that's at the district level, that wouldn't be at the Tallahassee level.
Okay, all right, I shall make that approach next.
One of the members of the state delegation on a ride, let them drive. And real life.
We lived in city limits, and all the tickets go to Brad, so he's lived it.
Yes, yes.
And he's not, he's not for them.
I got to do four more, nineteen, all the time.
At all.
Yeah.
Well, that's a good, good time to, to bring it forward, maybe, maybe we'll have a conversation at the MPO as well.
Yeah.
One other thing, I was talking to Mike at my meeting yesterday, as we briefed for the board meeting, and I talked about something, Hudson Library is now being shut down, we're gonna do renovations. There's a huge parking lot that's there, part of it's gonna get redone. The very front, part of the, front of the parking lot is in pretty good, is a pretty good spot for people to get to, easy access to it. Anybody affected by hurricanes would be easier to get there, that's why they picked one of the places to be for a, a service for FEMA to be there.
Yeah.
What I would like to do, like we saw at FAC, where they had these modular home came in.
Yeah.
Showed what they could do, showed how much it would cost, the only difference from the cost basis that we saw is they don't know what the cost would be for elevating from one home to another home. The other thing I saw at Skullafest, we had brought in a local company here, the container homes, our staff's been out there to look at it, they like them too. I would like to have these two options out there for people at Hudson Library, where they can actually have a modular home, have the container home, if there's something else that's applicable, where people can look at, like, changing out those homes, raising them up, getting prices as we do, as we.
Are modular acceptable for the HUD money? Because some things are, and some things aren't.
Yes, they are, as a matter of fact, they're in our plan as well, so we, we put it all in there, so I think if we just have some options for people, up and down the coast, they can get there, it's nice and easy, it's not gonna affect any facilities, but I think it's something that if they can see what they could get, we can.
I think that's a good idea.
And make some ideas, and, and let's see if the people wanna do it, if there's a big demand for it, now they got two things to compare, so they're gonna compete on price too, and make some decisions, but help get this CBGR money going, and help people get back into homes that'll be without mold, safer, more resilient.
Saying use the parking lot as a place where you can show some models.
I understood it to be kind of an expo, if you will, of here's some stuff, we would have to invite multiple vendors or something if we.
If there's, if there's others out there, but let's say, these two here would be comparable anyway, but I think the spacing is the key, and then how do we make it happen from here, but just, let's make it available to our people so they can see it. And that's all I got, thank you.
Okay, County Administrator.
Thank you, ma'am, just a couple of things real quick, I just, again, happy to announce that from the Pasco perspective, which was our internal art contest with our employees and their families, that the winners exhibits are now on display at the East Pasco Government Center, so we're able to display twenty-one pieces of art from our 2025 winners, and that'll be in place until January thirtieth. Just a great program, just, again, glad to promote it and to see the, the interest continues to climb amongst our, amongst our votes with the arts. The other thing that I wanna mention is kudos to our corrections department team, they had received an unannounced inspection from the Florida Model Jail Standards Group, they passed with flying colors, and, and I'm happy to say that prior to departing, that the inspectors commended the leadership present on their experience and demonstration of professionalism by all levels of their staff, the cleanliness of the facility, as well as the efficiency of their organizational operations, so just again, shout out to Chief Jenkins and the Public Safety Team for everything that they do. It's a tough job we ask them to do, nobody likes it, but it's, it's, it's a good, it's a good thing that they're doing out there, that's all.
County Attorney.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Clerk.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I, on behalf of Clerk Alvarez Soles, I would like to thank the Board of County Commissioners and the county for building the empowerment room, it is a critical component of, of safety for our community. I have a real-world example that occurred yesterday. The room just opened in Newport Riche last week, and we had a victim come in with her friend, and her abuser came in as well, and the victim and her friend were securely in the empowerment room, and he was unable to get to them, you know.
Ooh, scary.
He was filing paperwork, so he had legitimate business in the building, however, with coordinating with the sheriff's office and in the clerk's office, those, those two women were safe throughout the time while her injunction was being reviewed by the court, and the sheriff's office was able to coordinate her safely out of the building without the abuser being aware that she left, and he was subsequently served with the injunction paperwork. So thank you very much for building that safe space, and we have them in both courthouses now, and they are critical to keeping our community safe. Thank you, Soles.
Yeah, okay, I attended the USF Women in Leadership Conference at, at USF, my gosh, that, were you there? Were you at that? That was, I mean, how many women were there? Five million? I don't know, that's probably the biggest event I've ever been to in Tampa. It was packed, and, and our speaker was very interesting, Gina Davis was our keynote speaker during lunchtime. I won't tell you what I did while she was talking, but she, you know, she started a film festival in Bentonville, which is very interesting, so I looked that up, gave me some ideas, I'll bring those to you at another time, that's my rabbit brain working. We had the 12th AMSKILLS Annual Awards Dinner, thank you, Commissioner Mariano, you were so, so passionate jumping up there on that stage. We had a full house, and we had, and that's like David Engel speaking there, is he here? I think at the next meeting, I'll have David and Derek come, show you the award that AMSKILLS won, an international award that Derek picked up for us. Then, let's see, what else should I say about that?
The, the speakers, the stories, the people there that were just showing appreciation, Peter Prisansky from, from way back when, still there, loving, loving what we've been doing over these years to help people get jobs.
Yeah, one of our speakers was the President of NIMS, which is the National Instrument and Metal, I don't remember what the S is, but they're, they're an agency that gives out credentials, so it's industry-recognized credentials for the people who go through our programs. The other speaker was a former Bucks player, Frank Murphy. The other speaker was a former Bucks player, Frank Murphy, who Gus Bilirakis met at the White House. So he is very connected with the White House and throughout the country, working on workforce issues and education issues for, I think, people who have some challenges in life that, like, he overcame some. So he has his own nonprofit, and, and I have his book in my car. Very powerful speaker. Where was he from? Was he from the Southern United States? I don't remember, but he's in jail twice in his life. And, and people gave him some second chances. And he took those second chances and made something out of it, and was drafted and played.
And makes her this passion now to help other people. And I'd say it inspired me so much, I just couldn't sit there. I just had to like talk a little bit. And I would thank you for all the great work you did to bring AM Skills in and, and all the, all the lives you've changed with that program.
Yeah, it was, we showed some videos of people who, who are employed in different businesses around the Tampa Bay area. And it was very impactful, I think. So I also attended the empowerment grand opening. I am really glad to, that we have that room. And the artwork is absolutely amazing. And I want to figure out how to get the, the bird that's taking off in the water. That was an amazing photograph. Look at that. So this is Lillian, I got her card.
Yeah.
I think she goes to my church.
Lillian Kukuzo?
Yeah.
She has out of our hands gallery, she's.
Yeah, so she's donating, she's donating this artwork to both galleries. And she told me, the bird, it's not one of these ones right here, but the photo of the, of the, what's the bird with the red wings? The.
Sandhill crane?
What, what'd you say?
Redbird or a hurdle?
No, no, a big, a big water bird, not a sandhill crane.
Flamingo.
No, it's not a flamingo, oh gosh. I can't remember the name of it, but it has red on its wings. It, she said she was, the way she took her pictures, interesting. She's sitting in the water and, and she's standing so she could get an at-water shot, like a horizontal shot. And she said, maybe it was a sandhill crane?
Or a heron or something.
Or, it's not in any of these. It's, it's a big picture all on its own. They unveiled it during, I have a picture of it somewhere. That, that the bird, she said she's learned that the bird poops and then takes off. So she sits there and she saw, she saw the bird doing its thing and started clicking. And she has an amazing picture of a bird taking off in the water. I, I'm going to get, I'm going to buy a copy of that. So, but I'm, I'm very glad that we have that and we keep our people safe. I had my harbors, well, you had the jail tour photos there. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to. I am going through a very stressful thing with my family. And it's a dual citizenship thing. And I had a, I got word the night before that I had to get up at 5:00 in the morning and drive to Miami for a 12 o'clock appointment at the Spanish consulate. So that's why I wasn't on the jail tour and why I wasn't at the Tri-County meeting. But I did, I worked the whole way down, I did, I did listen. So thank you for my staff for going on that tour, and I hope I can have one, one day. Commissioner, I did, I did listen to Commissioner Eggers talking about 54 and 41. I'm one of the commissioners he called. He said he contacted one of the other commissioners, I don't know who it was.
Huh? It wasn't me.
No, well, he contacted me, and I said, "Well, I'm so glad you're experiencing our pain." And when we're, when we're working together at our TMA meeting, this is why we really insisted that we get 54 and 41. Remember, it wasn't on the, the priority list at one time?
I'm very happy.
Push, push, push.
If you remember him, he and Janet Long made the motion second to get that on the list.
Yeah, yeah, so he got to experience, I think we have a, a true, a true helper. He had told me that on the, he had gone to Tallahassee to talk to one of the committee meetings on term limits for commissioners, I think it was. And, and also districts, Commissioner Districts. So I guess they're looking at whether commissioners should be districts only or elected countywide. They're, so we, maybe we want to follow that, I don't know. But he stopped to see Chris LaValle in Gainesville and said that Chris is doing much better. We almost lost him there. They actually had a plane come from Shands to pick him up and fly him back to Shands. And, but he's, he's doing better, but he's not out of the woods yet. But so, that's in our prayers. So going back to the HSLC, oh no, that's, that's not it. No, no, it's a water bird. That's, it's some kind of heron or whatever. I'm going to, I'll pull it up. This is my Harbor South Leadership Council meeting. We had Metropolitan Ministry speak over here. We had the Parks Department, the, the undersheriff and code, I say enforcement, but she says something different. Great, huh? Yeah, 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 yeah. I want enforcement. And thank you to all the staff that came out and participated in that meeting, went very well. Then tourist development updates. Florida Sports Coast proudly welcomed the Lynn Lewis Foundation for their Pink October Games, which is a women's flag football tournament dedicated, dedicated to supporting breast cancer awareness. It is at Wiregrass Ranch. We have the Tampa Bay Super Cup coming up. It's Florida Sports Coast three weekends, juniors on 24th, 26th. The boys will be October 31st, number two, and the girls, November 14th through 16th. And this is a soccer tournament. So this is a big one. They are all, all over the county during this soccer tournament. Remind you, there is a 5K, a 10K, and a fun walk run at Starkey Market on January 17th for John Hopkins All Children's. Then, this is something I want to discuss with us. I listened to the planning commission meeting. I don't remember if this was in a workshop or during the meeting. And I thought John Moody came up with a pretty good idea. And if you remember when we were talking with our fellow.
Really?
With our, I know. With our legislators about the cost of us building sidewalks or roads when we have to deal with either Davis Bacon or just the way our bid process is. If you heard at our workshop, when I mentioned we wanted to put some slow speed signs in the water in Gulf Harbors, and my dock guy could do it for $600 a pole or something, and the county bid was $10,000. Ridiculous, ridiculous. So apparently, in Pinellas County, when their builders or developers are coming in and doing a project, if they can't build the sidewalk right there for whatever reason, they have them build it somewhere else that's on the, the county's list of important projects to get done. And so they can build them much cheaper than we can. So I thought this was a really good idea and that we should explore figuring out how we can have our development community, instead of giving us money, and then we pay for it, our money doesn't go as far. Let's figure out how we can use their money to build our network out quicker.
Can I bring up something?
Yeah.
It's sidewalk related, I meant to bring it up. I sent it, Mike, I sent you an email with David Allen this morning about the sidewalks on Fairwoods and Colony. And from what I, all right, so the sidewalk wasn't built. I was out there, I took pictures and I showed it to you guys one time as we're coming in. As far as like, there was no drainage, there was no sidewalk there either. And it looks like they're just going to pay us $84,000 to put the sidewalk in instead. Did you get a chance to review that? Okay, all right, we'll deal with it next week.
Commissioner, I did.
You did? Okay.
Yeah. And, and I know that the engineering.
Yes, that's it, Rosier the spoon.
Engineering group is, is looking at a couple of different options for building the sidewalk. I don't know that they have a schedule set yet, but they've already done some preliminary cost estimates. And part of that work was going to be bundled with additional road improvements as well on Colony.
Okay, so, so we're not taking the money, they're still going to build it?
No, we're going to take the money.
No.
And then, and then we have, we have a larger county project along the roadway that then we'll also build the sidewalk and apply those funds to.
When we, I think when we pay someone else to do a sidewalk, we pay more. Maybe it's, I'd love to know. When we build it ourselves, maybe we pay less. But I think we need to explore this.
Let's, at least make sure, David, if you would, let's go see what the final costs really are to what that sidewalk is. And if that 84 is the number, number, so be it. But if it's not, it shouldn't be coming out of our transportation funds.
And I'm talking about roads too. I mean, wherever we can push that off, let someone else build it, and it's cheaper than us going out to bid for something, I think we should do it. Until they fix that, because.
Madam Chair, we frequently do have developers build.
I know.
Roads and sidewalks. The, the issue is they usually want to build the roads and sidewalks near their project.
You were there at the meeting.
Yeah, they don't usually want to build roads and sidewalks that don't benefit them. I mean, they, they don't want to build roads and sidewalks on the other side of the county because they don't benefit them.
But if they have to give us money towards one, because they can't do it for whatever reason, and I don't know what the reason would be.
I get, I get your point, but they're mobilized at their site. Like, there, there's a reason they want to build the sidewalks and roads near their site because they're already mobilized there anyway.
No, I.
They're not going to want to mobilize 10 miles away to build a sidewalk.
But they, didn't they say in Pinellas County they have them do that?
Actually, staff said the opposite, that Pinellas County is not doing that. That's what they said at planning commission. But we can, we can look at that. I'm just saying that most developers are not going to want to mobilize their contractors 10 miles away to build something.
And how about this? If someone has paid in money to us instead of building a sidewalk, why don't we say to a developer, if they're in a certain area where, I know it takes a little more work, if they're in a certain area where we want a sidewalk, hey, we'll give you the money and you extend it that we got from this other developer. I'm just trying to avoid us going to bid paying more.
We do that all the time.
Okay.